Let me call to order a special meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. It's Tuesday, June 21st at 6:30 PM. Let's start with the call to order. You have a roll call.
Chairman Hartsfield.
Here on Zoom.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Larson is unable to attend and then Commissioner Nielsen.
Here.
Okay, and by way of explanation, Mr. Hartsfield is not able to attend this evening while in person for convenient administration of the meeting. I will act as chair instead. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, since this is a special meeting, we don't have minutes to address. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is continued from June 9th. Request by NES Inc., applicant on behalf of New Life Holdings Corporation owner and its affiliated operating nonprofit corporate entities, Andrew Wobec Ministries, Inc. And Caris Bible College, Inc. to consider a PUD amendment to, one, revise dimensional standards to allow a height increase from 35 feet to 45 feet maximum for the student housing. And two, remove a past condition of approval that the temporary student housing be privatized through either a lease arrangement or some other arrangements so that it can be separately taxed. Subject property is located in 800 Gospel Truth Way with a legal description of Lot 1, the Sanctuary, Woodland Park, Colorado, and is zone planned unit development for the purpose of developing a planned business development. Let me note as well that this meeting, this matter is scheduled for a city council public hearing on Thursday, July 1st, which time they will act upon it with the results of the planning commission.
Excuse me, sir? July 21st.
July 21st, sorry. Thank you. All right, let's start with us as planning director to introduce the application.
Dave, double check my Zoom status so that I can share my screen, please.
Note there about panelists. Let's verify Ken is, Ken, can you hear us? Can you hear you?
Yes, I can. I'm here. Please proceed.
Great.
Still not showing up what your ability.
You should be signed in as co-host.
Still not giving me a place to share my screen. Yes.
Vice Chairman Brown, while we're waiting, can we give instruction to the group here on where our emergency exits are?
Which, go ahead.
Well, the back door, obviously, but there is also an exit to the north side of the building and out to the front. We are now exceeding the maximum capacity of this room. And there's also bathrooms in the hallway in case you've never discovered them, but they were built for children. So just remember that when you go in, ladies.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Just so tall. I'm kind of Oliver Bulchett.
What do we do if we can't get her screen? We'll just go to different.
Can we share it with somebody?
Yeah, just have Dave share it from the back.
That's surprising. I don't know. The only thing I know what to do is tell her to log back in. That's probably the edge of my IT expertise. Yeah. Yeah, if Dave doesn't bring it back, I don't think Ken will be able to zoom. You know, or won't be able to. Yeah.
My sincere apologies. Like most technological things, this worked perfectly the last time we did this. And nobody has touched anything in the interim days since the last time we did this. So there are grim ones out there. So, yeah, we're about to try a different computer and a different login. So, Mr. Chairman, if you want to recess the meeting for a short bit, we can do that while we get this up and running.
So give people 10 minutes?
Sure, we'll try for 10. I'm going to try for five, actually, but.
Okay, well, that's five minutes if people like to go outside, get some air or something. We'll start, we'll start back at 7:45 within luck. Appreciate your patience.
6:45.
6.
Yeah. And not that we can blame anybody. Wherever it cuts.
To be interesting. Okay, I understand. We're ready to start again now. If people could quiet down for us, please. And we reconvene the meeting.
Provided I can find the mouse cursor. There it is, okay. Say thank you, everyone, for your patience as we got our technical difficulties sorted out. And I apologize if I have a hard time following the mouse this evening. My personal workaround is mine is bright green and this one is not. So, thank you. As the chair announced, this evening, we have a request from the Sanctuary and Bible, Caris Bible College to make two changes to their previously approved PUD over for their campus known as the Sanctuary. And here on this slide, we have an overview of the city of Woodland Park with our distinctive Highway 24 horseshoe. And then the site over here in the southwest corner of the city highlighted with this red dot and a blue perimeter around the parcel. The aerial photo shows Highway 24 coming vast on the southeast. County Road 25, also known as Trout Creek Road on the northeast side of the parcel. And again, their parcel outlined in this bright blue line. Coming into their property is Gospel Truth Way. And then here on the west side of their property is the existing Bible College and the parking garage that has been developed there. Here we go. The project history, the planned unit development slash planned business development was approved previously. Okay, so excuse us. There's a thing that shows up. Turns out we're not actually sharing screen with the rest of the Zoom world, so that's our current issue. Oh, wait a minute, let's try this one. Sure. Green screen. Yeah, thanks, John.
Yes, Karen, you're sharing your screen currently.
Okay, so the slide that everybody missed. Was this one with an overview of the vicinity map and the aerial for the subject property. And so with that, going into the hit project history, it was in 2012, Planning Commission and City Council did their initial approval of everything. That included the preliminary plat and the planned unit development, planned business development, final development plan, and zoning ordinance number 1162, and then a preliminary plat. All of this established the allowed uses, the overall development layout and dimensional standards for those uses. The Sanctuary final plat was approved in December of 2013. And then Caris Bible College opened in January of 2014 with 600 students. This PUD planned business development was amended to allow the parking garage in January of 2015. Within all those documents, there is a table that are a list that talks specifically about what is allowed. And that includes private lodging, including student housing as listed under the PUD zoning use. These uses that are listed within the PUD are subject to administrative staff reviews for zoning development permits and construction permitting. So when something has already been established as an allowed use, an additional public hearing is not required. But here this evening, because we are wanting to, or the applicant's wanting to make two revisions, that's why we're having a public hearing related to this. The dimensional standards that were set up with regard to specifically student housing was three-story buildings, 35 feet in height and for a maximum of 500 bedrooms and 300 units. And then the parking, the number parking spaces was also specified. Back in 2015, when the parking garage was added, that took care of a lot of the parking requirements at that point and well into the future. So that was, was part of what that did for the project. So tonight, there are two requests. The one is to change the dimensional standard associated with the building height for the student housing, increasing that from 35 feet to 45 feet. And then the second request is to remove a past condition of approval that the temporary student housing be privatized through either a lease agreement or some other arrangement so that it can be separately taxed. Regarding public notices for this hearing, notices were published in the Pike's Peak Courier at least 10 days prior to this hearing. Signs were posted on the property at least 10 days prior to the hearing. And then a courtesy notice of tonight's hearing, as well as the July 21st City Council hearing, were sent to adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the subject property. This project was. Sorry. This project was also sent out for referral to other city departments and agencies, including Public Works Utilities, Core, and Northeast Teller County Fire Department. We did receive comments back from the city engineer in Core, but those were related to the administrative review of the site plan, but not these requested PUD changes. Northeast Teller County Fire Department provided the following comment. And specifically, the fire district is concerned about changing the taxing status of the student housing to non-taxing. This puts a larger strain on their fundraising to support the district residents. They're concerned about the ever-increasing demand for fire and emergency services on this property without receiving funding to properly provide those services and to include staffing for an aerial apparatus required due to the increased height of the building. Please consider alternative methods of payment in lieu of tax. So Netco was recommending this approval of this PUD request. With regard to citizen comments or public comments, additional comments have been taken into the record. Those include two that were sent with the staff report because we had received them by the date of the initial staff report. And then an initial comment that was sent out today that we had received in the interim. With regard to changing the heights, the city code provides the following definition for a height of a building. That is the vertical distance from the finished grade, which is the average finished elevation of the ground around the structure to the highest point of the roof. So when that gets applied to a structure and we have varied terrain, we do look at the average of all of those. In our zoning districts here within the city of Woodland Park, typically our residential zones, the maximum building height is 30 feet for the primary building. And then in our commercial zones, it is 35 feet. PUD zones such as this allow for flexibility in establishing other maximum structure heights. This PUD was approved with a building height that ranges from 25 feet for some existing structures that were on the site, up to 60 feet for the proposed administration building. As I stated before, the student housing buildings were supposed, are supposed to be three stories with 35 feet building height. Already constructed on the site are the parking garage and the college building. Those are at 54 feet in height. And then for comparison, when we look around Woodland Park, there are a couple of other buildings that exceed the height in their zoning district. They got that way through obtaining a variance from the Board of Adjustment. Two examples of that are Our Lady of the Woods, who's at 45 feet in the central business district. And then Trail Ridge Apartments are also at 45 feet, but in the multifamily residential urban zone. So this slide depicts the overall site plan for the property. To help orient everybody here along the southeast side is Highway 24. And then across the northeast side is Trout Creek Road. And again, Gospel Truth Way as it comes into the property, coming around the site. Here on the left is the parking garage and the initial college building. And it's within this dashed area that I've been calling the North Housing Site. That is the area that we're talking about in this application at this point. There is a secondary future student housing site here on the south side of Gospel Truth Way. Other things on the site show the proposed future administration building. There is an existing lodge building on the site. And then there's some other smaller existing cabins. It's those cabins that were at that 25-foot height. When we zoom in on that square where the student housing is going at the north side, the road hooks around to the left to the parking garage. And there's a little splinter that comes off to the right. And this is all along what's amounts to a ridge line with a loop here and four buildings around that loop. And then another small road that cuts off here to the northwest with two other buildings. Because of the terrain, this property slopes to the north and the east around all of these buildings. So these buildings are set into that hillside. And with the height, the high part being the roads. The next slide shows an aerial of that same area. So again, the college building, the parking garage. And in this red square is the area we're talking about with that high point running roughly in here and then up through here. You can see that there is a good degree of trees here in that area. And because of the slope of the land and the trees, that helps provide. And because of the slope of the land and the trees, that helps provide some natural screening and buffering of the proposed buildings. The elevations that are proposed for these buildings are consistent with the architectural guidelines for the city of Woodland Park. With a Western mountain type architecture. This top slide shows the buildings as they would be viewed from the internal road. So at that point, you're essentially seeing two-story buildings with a 512 pitch roof. And it's on the backside of the buildings where it's seen as the three-story structure. This next slide shows the thinner end of the building. And so on this side is the west elevation to the left of the screen. And east elevation on the right of the screen. And there is a a grade line here across the bottom that gives an example. Of how on that high side of the property, it appears as a two-story structure. And on the lowest side of the property is the three-story structure. So when we look at our code with regard to code compliance. As reflected in the city council minutes from June 7 of 2012. They had concluded that the PUD PBD standards had been met. And then the more majority of the criteria in the so the city's code. Are really not applicable in this particular scenario since we're looking at revising such a small subset of an overall PUD. So the couple that in staff's opinion did apply really was the dimensional standards. And those are established with recommendation, the planning commission and then approval by the city council. And staff's finding was this proposal does comply. The slope of the site impacts how the building height is measured. That existing terrain and the vegetation work together to mitigate visual impact of the height, especially as what would be seen. From off the property along Trout Creek Road. That 45-foot proposed building height will not inhibit views. And the one thing that staff is asking for is that the tables on the cover sheet. Are revised so that they are consistent with how they've appeared on the prior PUD cover sheets. And then we also would like the student housing identified into parts. One would be for this particular phase to identify the number of units. And bedrooms associated with this north phase. And then a second line talking about the the future phase, the remaining units that would be permitted under that phase. With that number not to exceed what has previously been identified. And then the second criteria did didn't directly apply, but as seen as supportive is related to landscaping. Again, that terrain and the vegetation work together to mitigate visual impacts. And then additional landscaping is proposed with this project. So with regard to this first request, staff recommendation is approval of the change in the building heights. From 35 feet to 45 feet. But the building number of stories remains the same at three stories. And this is based on the findings contained in the staff report and is presented here at the hearing. Subject to the condition that the tables on the cover sheet, specifically site data, land use and parking. Are revised so that the information is presented in a format that is consistent with past approvals. And the temporary student housing is listed in two parts to clarify the number of units and bedrooms. Being constructed in this phase and the number of units slash bedrooms for the future phase. So that's the first request. The second request relates to the desire to remove the past condition of approval. That the student housing be privatized through either a lease agreement or some other arrangement so that it can be separately taxed. The wording of how that condition appears in both the planning commission and city council minutes is. The applicant agrees that the housing on the development will be temporary student housing, not permanent housing. And that the student housing will be privatized through either a lease arrangement or some other arrangement so that it can be separately taxed. So the history of how we got to that condition was the planning commission held their hearing on this proposal. Back on April 12 to 2012. And that was presented with a staff recommendation that included 13 conditions. Those are itemized here and those deal specifically with things like landscaping, photometrics, grading. Just things very typically associated with the land and layout and planning of the site. The planning commission minutes include on page six, a statement from the applicant, Andrew Womack Ministries Incorporated. Their representative, Mr. Bozeman. And he addressed at that time, the privatization or potential racks tax revenue issue for the housing. By stating that it is not a requirement that they privatize the housing. But that they intend to hire a private contractor to do that work as an added concession. Our one planning commission member, Mr. Larson, inquired into whether or not the applicant would be opposed to making this a requirement. Mr. Bozeman stated that he wasn't aware that this was a legal precedence. But that he was not opposed to doing that, as this is how they plan to proceed either way. There's further discussion on page eight of the planning commission minutes between the planning commission members, the city attorney and Mr. Bozeman. Ms. Mattingly commented that she supported Mr. Larson's recommendation to require privatization of the housing element of this project. Ms. Smith, the city attorney stated that the record reflects that the applicant did concur with this as a requirement. Mr. Bozeman interjected that if this is a legal requirement, they would agree with it. Further stating that it was the applicant's personal commitment to move forward with privatizing the housing. Mr. Bozeman stated that if the commission instructs them to make it a condition, they would move forward and agree to it. Ms. Smith informed the applicant that voluntarily agreeing to this would answer the issue. She stated that if the commission requested and the applicant would voluntarily agree to it, then it may be added as a condition. Mr. Bozeman responded that this was fine. Mr. Rollinger stated that he believed what Ms. Mattingly was suggesting was to make it another condition. Ms. Mattingly have respond responded affirmed that this was her intent. Ms. Smith stated that her understanding was the applicant was agreeable to making this condition number 14. So with that, the language for condition 14 was developed and agreed to as follows. This mirrors exactly what was presented earlier in the the staff report. That the housing on the development will be temporary student housing, not permanent housing. That the student housing will be privatized through either a lease arrangement or some other arrangement so that it can be separately taxed. The attorney then asked the commission if this was agreeable and received after affirmation. She asked Mr. Bozeman if this was agreeable and he replied that this was something they were doing anyway, so this was fine. So with that, the planning commission approved the project, finding that it qualifies as a PUD. Subject to conditions one through 13 with the addition of condition 14 is suggested by the attorney. That motion carried seven to one. Next in the history of historical timeline, the city council heard the same request on June 7. Staff presentation included the planning commission recommendation with those 14 conditions. At the end of the meeting, city attorney Smith reminded council. That there are 14 conditions of approval and asked the applicants if they agree with all 14 conditions. Mr. Bozeman stated they did not object to the conditions of approval. City council voted to approve the rezoning of the property to PUD. And approve the PUD PBD final development plan with 14 conditions. And approved ordinance number 1162, series 2012. That operates that they can operate the Caris Bible College with religious slash education center, student housing, administrative building and associated uses. So we're going to take a step back and provide some context around land use and zoning law in Colorado. Typically, land use and zoning law is a matter of local concern. Where municipalities under the framework of state statute can set out their own rules and guidelines. For how this is administered in the jurisdiction. There are some exceptions that these are considered matters of statewide concern. Examples of that would be a pipeline that crosses through multiple counties or transmission line. Or most recently, changes to the family home childcare rules. Those are now set out by the state instead of us as a local government. There are also times when federal law. Provides other framework or sets priorities around what needs to happen. And in this particular situation, the law that comes into play is called Arloopa or the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. This prohibits a local government from imposing or implementing land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden. On the religious exercise of a religious assembly or institution. Unless the government demonstrates the imposition on that assembly or institution is A. In the furtherance of a compelling governmental interest. And B is the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling governmental interest. So what does the planning commission have the authority to do? And that is to make and adopt plans and with regard to zoning. They are empowered to regulate and restrict height, number of stories, size of buildings and other structures. The percentage of lot that may be occupied. The size of yards, courts and other open spaces. The density of population and the height and location of trees and other vegetation. And the location of use of buildings, structures and land for trade, industry, residence or other purposes. When it comes to subdivision of land, the commission has the power to impose use, height, area or bulk requirements. Or restrictions governing buildings and premises within the subdivision. If such requirements or restrictions do not authorize the violation of the then effective zoning ordinance for the municipality. PUDs have their own state statute. And that allows local governments wide discretion and flexibility when establishing a planned unit development as it relates to regulating uses. And mitigating the impacts of you, the use. So with regard to code compliance, as reflected in the city council minutes from June 7 of 2012. The council concluded that the PUD PBD standards had been met. With regard to this request, there are no standards to review. The criteria listed in the city code is not applicable to this request. And then tax status is not within the city's land use controls or legal jurisdiction. So the conclusion that staff had was that the terms detailed in condition number 14 were offered by the applicant's representative. And the applicant's representative group agreed to the condition and commitment to the community. Nevertheless, the applicant has raised questions relating to Arloopa and the First Amendment. Therefore, staff's recommendation that the planning commission make a substantive recommendation solely to request number one, as you you heard discussed earlier. Regarding this request number two, the removal of condition of approval 14. The recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the city council is the proper body to weigh in on this modification. Including a consideration of the application of Arloopa. Questions, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Karen. That was very good. Appreciate that presentation.
I I do have questions. I thought. Did you, Ken? Okay, you were just thanking Karen for excellent presentation and it was once it got started. I want to go to request number one and I had some. Procedural questions. Why is the planning commission hearing a request for a variance on height? As opposed to the Board of Adjustment?
Because of how our code is structured. The city council is ultimately the ones who set the dimensional standards in a PUD. But with the recommendation for the planning commission. In any other zone district other than the PD, you're absolutely correct. The applicant would have made a request for a variance to the Board of Adjustment. But because the PUD is a special zone district where all that is established. It needs to go back for review and consideration and ultimately approval by city council for any changes to dimensional standards.
And was that the case for the parking garage on this property as well? The is at 54 feet.
The use. Ironically, uses are just at the planning commission level. So I know that that was was at the planning commission. I don't recall if it went to city council. It might not have since it was matching the height of the building to which it was attached. Which is the the sanctuary college building.
So there was never a request for a height variance for the parking garage or for the main building?
The main building height was established with the initial PUD in 2012. Okay, as as was for the administration building at 60 feet.
The planning commission heard the request to add the parking garage, so it probably drawn at 54 feet.
For the record, I was on a planning commission at the time and then on city council when the final PUD was approved in 2012. But I'm old and sometimes my memory fails me. But I have some some recollection of the discussion on the 60-foot building. Um, for the other two buildings that you use as examples. The Trail Ridge Apartments and the facility associated with the Catholic Church. How were theirs approved, their variances?
Those were Board of Adjustment requests since they're within established zone districts by ordinance, ones in the central business district. The other one is the the multifamily residential urban zone.
Next question, and I know Chief Lambert from. The fire department or the fire district is here and he may be able to answer this question if he's willing to. When the letters for input or the requests to the utilities and to the other taxing districts went out, what was the question that was asked of them? I did not see a discussion in the first request from the applicant about. Emergency services or hazardous. Is that not part of the criteria for a change to a PED? And if so, what was the question that was asked of Northeast Teller Fire District?
That criteria is not listed as part of the the criteria for review. And they were sent a notice similar to the residence that says the applicant has requested these two changes.
Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to ask Chief Lambert to speak at this time or should we wait? If he's willing to speak. I see him in the hallway. Just to talk to that specific request or the specific response that Northeast Teller Fire District sent to the city, if he could expand on it.
Chief like to explain?
I was going to stop sharing the screen, but there it is. Thank you. This angle changes everything.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet. Well, what was the question again?
Can you explain the response that you provided to the planning department regarding this project and the request for variation in height?
So usually when we get a request for variance in height for buildings, it it brings us into an apparatus. Response of an aerial truck and our aerial truck is a big piece of apparatus that carries all our tall ladders on it. It requires really four personnel. We got four personnel that respond to every call in our district today. First call out. So when we do that, we have to split our crews and put three firefighters on one truck and one on the apparatus for the aerial truck to get the ladders. And it's been this way for for a long time and we deny most of those just because of. Our capability to meet ISO requirements and keep our ISO insurance is down as low as we can, that we need more personnel. To do that, we need, you know, minimum three more personnel per shift. That's not going to happen in the city of Woodland Park. It costs us about $88,000 per firefighter and we need one per shift.
Okay, I'm going to ask another question. This is in regard to the second request for change to the PUD. How is Northeast Teller County or Teller Fire District funded?
So we're funded by property tax only. We receive no city sales tax, county sales tax, none of that. 98% of our budget comes from property tax only. 2% about comes from specific ownership tax that comes up to about $2.6 million of a budget. Now that budget, we pay all the personnel, station costs, apparatus and everything. Now that budget, we pay all the personnel, station costs, apparatus and everything.
So any increase in the number of residents in the community, whether they're transitory or full-time, begins to add to the requirement for both personnel and equipment for the fire district, correct?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I actually have one. One of the things that I was wondering, and maybe this is a good time since you're here because I was going to ask the applicants that anyway. Given the fact that you're staying property taxes only are what's here and that's, you know, all that you can get your staff out of, correct?
It's property tax.
Okay, so with that being said, then, does that change anything? If we ask the applicants to maybe privatize what's on theirs in terms of fire and safety on campus, like many other colleges do? So if they have their own fire, you know, staff, and if they have their own police staff who stays strictly on the campus, they help with the campus and then maybe you and maybe the police chief are only backup. Does that change how you run your operation from day to, from day to day or anything that you're doing differently in terms of insurance or having more staff? If you're then there only as backup? And maybe you can have a memo of understanding that says, these are the reasons why we'll come. Otherwise you have it. So there's an agreement between every party and everybody knows. Would that change?
Possibly. That'd be an ISO question. The other ones that regulate the fire department and what we can do and we can't do. And that's what regulates your property insurance premiums.
Okay.
And that would be a follow-up question for me, Chief. ISO ratings impact every one of us living in the district, correct?
It does.
As numbers increase in population, how does that affect and the district's ability to service that number? How does that affect our ISO rating?
What's in our response times? You know, today we have 1,504, 1,450 calls per year on average. And 22% of those calls, we're getting back-to-back calls. So that means that if you do the math, a certain percentage of that is we're already on a call. If you call 911, you're going to wait some time for, to get a response. If we haven't already split our crews.
So the ISO rating could change and in turn then impact our insurance payments, the premiums?
It absolutely could. It's based on apparatus, it's based on water supply, it's based on our telecommunications with our dispatch centers. They take that and put it together and then they have divergence factors to give us our ISO score.
At this point in time, is it possible for the fire district to be able to man this specific piece of equipment that can reach the third floor of a facility without more revenue, tax revenues?
Let me put it in a little bit different perspective. City Carra Springs will go with their fire department. If you have a building that size in the city of Carra Springs, you'd end up getting, you know, two engines, a truck, an Italian chief, a squad. You have 30 firefighters, you know, first out, where we respond out with four. We have to wait for mutual aid companies to get from Divide or Fluorescent, Mount Commies or Green Mountain Falls. On average, that takes about 20 to 25 minutes to get more personnel on the incident.
That makes sense. I'm going to ask one last question, although we've been advised that both of these decisions, we're intending to kick down, kick the can down the road to the city council. But for the second request from the applicant in terms of not privatizing a piece of property at the ministry, there have been discussions over the years and I will refer back to the time I began the discussion with Larry Bozeman in 2011, is payment in lieu of taxes. How would that work and what do you think in a guesstimate would be an appropriate amount? No, it's very, it's very specific to the subject. It has to do with the second request for change to the PUD. And that is that the applicant does not want to privatize housing. And the purpose in privatizing housing was to provide property taxes to Northeast Teller District. If in fact, we do not recommend that to city council, then an alternative that we could include in our recommendation is a recommendation for payment in lieu of taxes. And so I'm asking that now the chief, have you come up with some figure that might substitute for the loss of property tax mill levy?
I've estimated out what our property tax income should be if it were exempt or non-exempt property. The Caris Bible College itself, we'd receive about $80,000 a year. Student housing, based on a guesstimate of it costing somewhere about 20 million, we should see about $30,000 a year.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Right, thank you.
I believe Mr. Hertzfield has his hand up on Zoom.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair or the fire chief?
This is for actually staff. The height variance, the first item is based on 45 feet, which is the total distance measured from the lower floor to the ridgeline base. I think it's 30, excuse me, 44 feet based on the drawings. Is there a calculation on what the actual height is based on the city ordinance of average height that would be needed to facilitate this building?
I don't quite understand the question, so I'm going to actually answer it slightly differently. When I took a scale to the drawings and I measured on the downhill side of the property, that grade to what would be the peak, that was right at 45 feet. And so when you measure on the uphill side of the property, that was roughly 35 feet. And so when you average those out, the building height actually comes in, you know, under 45 feet. But, you know, requesting that 45 feet is the dimension that appears on the PUD, I thought was more than reasonable and covered their needs for what they were wanting to propose. Does that get to your answer, sir?
Yes, does answer one question. So the average height, the first floor, lower floor to the main floor is 11 feet. Let's say five feet difference. So actually a 40-foot variance would be adequate to meet their current design standard. And then is this height variance for both the north housing and south housing units?
It's still limited to three stories, the building regardless of where it's located. So I was assuming we were applying the state standard to the student housing on the site as a whole, regardless of which location that the buildings would be constructed at. So yes, I was applying it to the whole, all student housing on the, this property.
Okay, and then I guess related more to section or part two. Have we defined what temporary is? For this ordinance or?
Temporary shows up in a couple of different places, but not all places. You know, it shows up in that condition 14. But on the PUDs, the actual plan documents, it lists just student housing. I, from conversations here and there, I understand it might have referred to temporary buildings for housing in the short run versus actual permanent buildings. My assumption from my days in college was it meant that they operated like dorms where people were there seasonally, you know, for basically an academic year, that it was not permanent, long-term living arrangements.
Because the building code addresses temporary as being 120 days or less. And then if we actually go to transient, days or less. Well, I don't have a good definition of what temporary is. And without that, it's hard to evaluate what the original CUP or what we're addressing in argument two this evening.
He said that as it appears on the PUD documents, it's listed as just student housing. Temporary shows up within that condition 14.
So 10-year graduate or doctorate student would be temporary?
Say that again?
If somebody, I'm not sure what the program, the college offers, but in typical college, it could be 10 years into a doctorate program.
Can I interject something that Larry submitted in his comments to the planning commission? Where he was explaining the temporary housing comment? Larry wrote in his paragraph eight, "The applicant proposed temporary student housing, mobile home, modular tiny home or other similar types at that time until permanent student housing could be built." So I believe the preference to temporary was for one type of housing. And then the reference to student housing was to the permanent student housing. I believe the application request for 45 feet applies to the permanent student housing. And I don't know that temporary housing is still in the plan, but that's my understanding.
Perhaps we can address that. The applicant doesn't address it directly. We can follow up.
Yeah.
All right, that answers my questions for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have another question for Karen. If in fact, the recommendation is that condition number 14 stay in effect for the city council to consider. And the land is privatized, however many square feet or acres that may end up being, how would it be categorized, multifamily housing? I don't know that our code addresses student housing per se. How would it be zoned if it were privatized?
It's zoned to PUD.
It's zoned to PUD, but if they privatize a set aside or a donut within their property, how would it, how would it be assessed by the county?
I don't know, but since that is actually mandated by, mandated by the state through the county assessor.
Okay, so we don't know if it would be multifamily. We don't know if it'd be revert back to agricultural, which is what it was initially.
They follow guidance from the state in terms of how they evaluate a structure and, and set up the, the tax classification.
And I guess for the record, the point I want to make, that would not be the city's decision. It would be the county and the state.
Best of my knowledge, yes. It's definitely not the city.
Thank you.
And we move on to the applicant's presentation. Someone here speaking for the applicant? All right, sir, could you give your name? What you start to ask of you, your name, your address, company you represent, sir? And if you would also identify, can you confirm that you are authorized to represent, to represent the owner and the applicant necessary? Thank you for your help.
This is why some households have two remote controls for the same TV.
Especially in mine because my daughter takes ours. Right. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having us today, especially for the special meeting. We appreciate you taking the time today. My name is John Romero. I'm with NES. We are representing the applicant here today in this application for a final PUD site amendment.
Hang on just a sec. It's not sharing the screen you think it is, Dave. At least on my computer.
They're on your screen again.
I'm looking at our file manager directory. So now I'm looking at the room in Mr. Hertzfield.
To give the green at the bottom there, Dave. Rick says share screen next to chat. Good to go?
No. I'm looking at my Zoom screen.
It's got to be the shared from Zoom. There we go. Right. That, I believe so. Looks like it, yep. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, waiting for Karen.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much. All right, so John Romero, NES. We are here representing Andrew O'Mac Ministries and Caris Bible Colleges. Application for a PUD amendment. With us here today, we do have some representatives from Andrew O'Mac and Caris Bible College. Richard Harris, who's the general counsel, Chris Cease, who's the executive director of construction facilities. Mr. John Reich, who's the construction manager. And Daniel
And Daniel Bennett, who's the dean of students. Also with us today is representing Charis Bible College is Nessbaum Spees and Gleerson, Gleason, pardon me. Andrew Nessbaum will be a part of this presentation with me also. Specifically to address that second request. Our civil engineer on this project was Catamount Engineering, Mr. David Mahara is LSC Jeff Hobson. And our architect was Seth Emerson with Kingdom Design. I'll try not to get, go over too much of the stuff that Karen did a great job of. So this is the location map as you saw, which is off Highway 24 in Trout Creek. Hundred and four, hundred and forty-six acre site for the original PUD. It's gotta get it to dance. There we go. All right. So this, as mentioned, is own PUD. We have mixed use to the north. We have agricultural to the east. We have the R1 district to the south and to the west is the Pike National Forest. I like to give this context because again, as Karen mentioned, a lot of these things that we went through were dealt with with the initial application that dealt with the comprehensive pain compliance. But with that, I think it's important to kind of understand that this site originally was approved back in 2015, but currently with the new master plan, this area is identified as a future land use area or mixed land use area for this specific area. And it's considered area B. Area B is comprised of the approved Sturman PUD Sanctuary PUD. And the Sanctuary PUD will have event space, cafe, educational facilities, and group quarter housing for students as identified in the mixed use area. As Karen mentioned, this is a part of the initial PUD that was approved back in 2012 and subsequently revised in 2015 for that parking structure. Part of this application, as she did a great job explaining, identified the uses and specifically student housing having a 35 foot maximum height and then they had a five to eight thousand per square foot story requirement along with 500 beds and 300 units. This also established the parking requirement for that, which you'll see in this application, which was one and a half stalls per unit. Along with this, it should be noted that there were setbacks centers. I don't think that we talked too much about that. This project, you'll see as we move forward, they discuss the setbacks, which for the majority of the property were 25 feet with 100 feet on the south side for the Westwood Lakes property. The proposal before you today is for a portion of that 146 acre site, which is only eight acres. The current land use is mixed use and it is zone PUD. The building height that we're proposing before today, as we've kind of discussed, is 45 feet. Currently it is 35. There is 99 parking spaces required and we are proposing 101, which includes ADA stalls. It should be noted that in these past approvals to some of that parking garage did anticipate parking, but we felt it was good to have kind of direct parking related to the use itself. Something to note too, as part of this is that there has been traffic studies provided with this application, which I'd noted with LSE. Those traffic studies very early on in that 2015 amendment specifically addressed the requirements for the 500 students with this application. We're only proposing 66 units with 242 beds. So we're well below that, the, the original approval that was within that. As part of this housing application, we are looking to put the necessary landscaping, all areas that are going to be disturbed will be mitigated with the proper open space preservation as we move forward. As discussed, one of the requests before you today is discuss the, the height itself. As Karen kind of identified, the height of buildings is defined in the code as a means of vertical distance between the finish grade or average finish grade. From the finished elevation of the ground flow to the highest point of the roof, we thought it was relevant to put an exhibit in here to kind of explain how that works. Specifically, when we looked at this, that tallest point, which you notice is 45 feet. This site, as Karen identified, is encumbered by a lot of different grading and different aspects to the site. So having this kind of three-story walkout was, was part of the reason that guided this change to what the needs were for the development. Based on our average heights, we're at about 40 feet. But we wanted to make sure that depending on how the topo worked and once we get out in the field that we, we had room so that we wouldn't need to come back for another amendment or possible variance. That 45 foot will carry through all of the student housing. That is the intent. And so that 45 foot would carry into future PUDs and any allowances that that PUD allows for additional student housing. I do think it's, it's important to note that when we talk about kind of the, the concerns with fire. And I won't speak necessarily to the taxation piece, is that we did have early meetings with the fire department to discuss this concern about the height. The initial meetings that we had were really to look at the building alternatives and the challenges with hose lay distances, which are required for fire access, but then also how they can access that third floor. So early on, our civil and our development team met with the fire department to discuss some options about how we can bench the site so they could make sure that they had proper access to that third floor. Specifically in the rear and how that rear area got dimensioned and those rear windows, which really allow them to access to that if they need to carry a ladder back there or the like. So this design is, is intended to work with the current topo and address heights impacts within that. Karen identified a few review criteria. I'm going to kind of take it back a little bit. So review criteria, one is really the one that Karen was talking about is do we have general consistency with the approved PUD? And we do feel that we have consistency with the past application and the recent comprehensive future land use plans, which identify the mixed use specifically for this area. We did provide appropriate traffic studies. And as part of this, as part of the larger campus, there have been overall wildfire mitigation studies that the Bible College in Charis has completed as part of this to kind of help mitigate some of those concerns. And as I mentioned, there were early meetings with the fire department to address access for the proposed buildings. The second part of that, I think when you look at this application, when we ask you to kind of review this is the code compliance for plan changes. Specifically with this amendment, there are, I believe, three that are apply. Item one is changes in general character or land you show require approval of the planning commission. And such approval may be granted after publication of notice or publication of public notice after the public hearing has been conducted as advertised. We did acknowledge that all applicants, application items were provided to the planning commission and proper notice has been given at this time. The second item is changes for, under the plan changes code is plan changes in location of building structures exceeding 10 feet in lineal distance or changes in the angle of location exceeding 15 degrees shall require approval of the planning commission to be granted at any regular special meeting for which the item in question has first appeared in the published agenda. This application is for a detailed development application that previously identified as part of the past PUD and all appropriate uses dimensional standards, parking landscaping are consistent with those in the past. Item C is changes in locations. Changes in locations not exceeding 10 feet. And the angle location not exceeding 15 degrees may be approved or denied by the city manager. A denial of change may be appealed to the planning commission. The city manager may refer to any change of the planning commission for decision if he deems it best in the interest of the city. Provided that all changes granted by the city manager shall report and write in the plan commission with 15 days. And similarly to that, this application, as with the past criteria criteria, has a detailed development application that we identified in that past PUD. And lastly, with the item that we discussed the most, I'm going to invite Andrew Nessbaum up here to discuss the request to remove condition 14 specifically.
Y'all are going to like that I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I went analog for my presentation. Too many Zoom jury trials during COVID taught me not to rely on text technology.
Excuse me, sir. Could you identify your name and your company?
Absolutely. I'm going to give you this too, John. My name is Andrew Nessbaum. I'm at the law firm Nessbaum Spear Gleason. I'm an attorney in Colorado Springs. My address is two North Cascade Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80903. With me tonight is my partner at Gleason. I thought I'd just introduce him briefly. It's my honor to represent the ministry with regard to the condition 14 issue before this commission this evening. I think my comments should last about 15 minutes, but in federal court, you're used to a hot bench is what it's called. So if you have questions for me while I'm speaking, I, I invite you to interrupt me in asking questions. 10 years ago, your predecessors on the commission thought a reasonable and lawful idea to recommend inclusion of condition 14 in the 2012 Sanctuary PUD of the ministry. We've heard it several times, but I would like to quote it again. Condition 14 says, quote, "The student housing at Charis Bible College will be privatized through either a lease arrangement or some other arrangement so that it can be separately taxed," end quote. Viewed now, 10 years on, condition 14 has proven to be wrong-headed. It was a clear violation of the law to consider Charis's religious character and its tax exempt status. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the commission make a course correction and recommend condition 14 be removed from the ministry's PUD. And I want to note at the outset, I think you should make a recommendation tonight. You have an obligation under the Woodland Park City Code. And I think you should make a recommendation to the city council. Charis stands ready to open a release valve on Woodland Park's ongoing housing crisis. As of today, Charis is prepared to break ground on 242 student housing units that will be the college's locus for forming students in the fundamentals of a Christian life. But 10 years on from the original PUD, as Charis considered condition 14, it became clear that it is both non-feasible and unlawful. This is the case for at least three reasons. First, condition 14 has no place in the PUD process. A PUD application should be approved if it meets the technical land use criteria listed in Woodland Park City Code, section 18 dot 30. The planning director put up a very nice list of the first 13 conditions to the original PUD. Those are the, this council's bread and butter, traffic plan studies, drainage setbacks. Y'all know that much better than I do. It's what you deal with month in and month out. Every time the ministry has become, has come before this commission, the commission has complimented the technical excellence of its PUD applications. But by contrast, tax revenue, the religious character of Charis and the public benefit of the ministry are non-relevant, non-land use criteria. They don't appear in the Woodland Park zoning code and the zoning code does not permit the commission, commission to consider them. Indeed, tax exemption appears exactly where you'd expect it to appear in the Woodland Park City Code in the finance section. What does the finance code say about taxes and religious institutions? And now I'm quoting, quote, "The following persons shall be exempt from the requirements of this chapter, any bona fide religious charitable civic or governmental body conducted not for profit." That's Charis. As far as I'm aware, Woodland Park has never requested another religious ministry, church, or any nonprofit give up its property tax exemption in exchange for land use approval. In fact, we represent churches across the country. My firm does. I'm not aware of any Colorado town requiring a nonprofit college to give up its property tax exemption. Regis University, Colorado College, Colorado Christian University, Noropa University, Fort Lewis College. All have been allowed to build student housing tax exempt. Charis is not asking for special treatment. The second reason condition 14 is unlawful and unfeasible is that it requires Charis to privatize student housing. And I want you to think about this. It requires Charis, a religious school, to privatize student housing. Not only is relying on a private developer unworkable, privatization would force Charis to trade away a focal point of its religious mission and character. Student housing at Charis, like any religious college, will be a center for forming students in a Christian life. Prayer groups, Bible studies, fellowship, and student life rules based on a Christian vision of a well-ordered life will be essential to student housing at Charis. Even the architecture will reflect Charis's unique theological and religious identity. Charis is about forming students in discipleship to Christ. And a ministry and as ministry members will tell you, discipleship is a 24-hour-a-day process. Condition 14 purports to force Charis to give up these essentially religious qualities to a for-profit business that does not share Charis's religious identity or mission. That's what the, that's what condition 14 means. The third reason. Charis and the ministry are religious not-for-profit institutions exempt from property tax under the Colorado Constitution and state statute. The planning directors PowerPoint presentation alluded to that. They're also exempt under the Woodland Park City Code, as I pointed out. The constitution says, Colorado Constitution. And I quote, "Property that is used solely and exclusively for religious worship for schools or for strictly charitable purposes shall be exempt from taxation." There's that word again, shall be exempt. Colorado State Statute says, quote, "Property which is owned and used solely and exclusively for religious purposes and not for private gain or corporate profit shall be exempt from the levy and collection of property tax shall be exempt." There's no exceptions there. You have no power to grant an exemption, exception, shall be exempt. I think it's important to remember not just the letter of the law, but why the law, why the laws exist. What are the purpose of Colorado scheme of property tax exemption for religious institutions and charitable nonprofits? There's many reasons, many good reasons. Religious institutions do incredible good work for the committees, communities they serve. They minister to the spiritual and material needs of the community. Colorado has said it wants to encourage that. Religious institutions are also charitable institutions. They hold in trust donations from others. People don't donate to charity, the Red Cross or the YMCA or Charis to pay the government taxes, but to further the mission of their not-for-profit for choice. That's why charitable contributions are tax deductible under the federal IRS code and state code. Finally, Colorado has exempted religious ministries from property taxes to avoid entangling the government in questions of religion. Precisely what this commission ironically is having to consider tonight because of its decision to impose condition 14 a decade ago. Which is all to say, 10 years ago, the commission had not thought through these issues, I don't think, when it imposed condition 14. But looking back, as Charis stands ready to build student housing, privatization is non-feasible and unlawful. Now, I understand the staff report says the ministry quote unquote agreed to condition 14, but that's simply not true. That's true for at least three reasons. First and most importantly, any agreement regarding condition 14 is legally unenforceable. So it's a common misperception that the only ingredients, ingredients needed to have an enforceable contract are one, a meeting of the minds, two, people getting together. And two, an exchange of value. That's what most people think of when they think of a contract. But that's actually incorrect. To be enforceable, enforceable, a contract must also be lawful under Colorado law. So imagine if the city is under pressure to increase the housing code, the housing stock. We have a housing crisis. We need more housing. And so they go to a developer and they say, "Build as many houses as you can as soon as possible." And the developer says, "I don't have time to do that." So the city says, "We'll waive sewage requirements and you can dump your water into a local, your sewage into a local creek." Imagine that happened. They might be in agreement. They might sign on the dotted line. There might be a PUD with signatures. But any lawyer would tell you that that agreement is unenforceable under Colorado law. That's true here too. Colorado Public Policy says very clearly that religious schools are exempt from property taxes. And condition 14 is therefore unenforceable regardless of its conclusion in the 2012 PUD. Now, even if condition 14 weren't void as a matter of law, it'd still be unenforceable. From my vantage point, I've reviewed the meeting minutes from the planning commission in 2012, the city council in 2012, and, and the planning commission and city council in 2015. And I've also reviewed the terms of condition 14 and I see no clear agreement. Start first, and I think Mr. Kennedy's questions were directed at this and maybe also Mr. Hartfield's. Start first with the language of condition 14. What does it mean that Charis student housing, quote, "Will be privatized through either a lease arrangement or some other arrangement?" Privatized how? Through a rental agency, through a five-year lease, a two-year lease, 100-year lease? Will the private entity be able to sell student housing whenever it wants to any entity that doesn't share Charis's values? Will it be temporary student housing? Is that what Larry Bozeman meant that all this applies to is temporary? Is that what Larry Bozeman meant, that all this applies to is temporary student housing? If that's the case, then we're ready to build permanent student housing, and the condition does not apply. In the 2012 Planning Commission meetings, which were quoted from earlier meeting minutes, Mr. Bozeman suggested that all that was required was for a private contractor to build the student housing. Is that what condition fourteen means? From my perspective, the only thing clear about condition fourteen is that it's totally unclear. Nor did the ministry agree to its terms. In 2012, the ministry's representative to this commission, Mr. Bozeman, was a non-lawyer construction manager. He didn't know whether condition fourteen was lawful, whether the commission had the power to force the college to give up its rights. He asked the then-city attorney whether there was legal precedent. That was what he was referring to, whether there was legal precedent precedent for requiring waiver of tax-exempt status for land use approval. And she said yes. That legal advice, however, was incorrect. All the ministry said in 2012 is that it would look at privatization possibilities, not that it agreed to waive its rights. Indeed, in 2015, if you look at the city council minutes in 2015, the ministry expressly said that condition fourteen is unlawful to the city council. I want to emphasize that Charis has no desire to litigate this issue. Charis is a religious ministry that wants to do precisely that, focus on forming students in discipleship. However, Charis also feels strongly about the rights they share with all Americans, including the right to religious freedom. That's why they hired my firm, which specializes, as I mentioned, in defending religious institutions and forums across the country. It was mentioned earlier, but as planning commissioners, there is a federal law you should know, it's called the Religious Land Use Act. It's known by its acronym, R L U P A, it's kind of a mouthful. The Religious Land Use Act says that the city and this commission cannot single out a religious ministry for adverse or unequal treatment. The First Amendment is also implicated here. It says that a regulation that requires a religious school to give up the religious character of its dorms violates the Constitution. The fact of the matter is, is that's precisely what condition fourteen does. It singles out Charis and forces it to compromise its religious commitments. In short, it violates Charis's right to religious freedom. And make no mistake, Charis is being substantially damaged as a result of the city's actions. Each day Charis cannot open student housing is a day it cannot welcome more students to the college with room and board dollars and all of the benefits that growing comes with. Finally, I want to conclude by addressing what I understand to be a concern of some members of the Woodland Park community, Charis and the ministry's impact on the city. It's important to note first that Charis's impact is not relevant to land use approval. The United States Supreme Court, as well, as well as the Colorado Supreme Court have both made clear that the public benefit of a nonprofit institution is irrelevant to its tax status as tax-exempt. Now, having said that, it is an unfortunate misconception from my perspective. It's an unfortunate misconception that the ministry is a drag on Woodland Park. The ministry is deeply committed to being a good neighbor to Woodland Park. This commitment to neighborliness is part of its Christian beliefs. It's the golden rule. Those same Christian beliefs, however, have led the ministry and its founder, Andrew Womack, to not publicize the ministry's commitment to charity. It's only at my behest, outside legal counsel, that the ministry has authorized sharing with you some of the positive impacts the ministry has had on this city. The ministry has lived out its commitment to neighborliness in at least three ways. First, over the last decade, ministry employees and Charis students have given thousands, thousands of hours of community service to local nonprofits. Second, the ministry quietly, without sounding a trumpet, has given over half a million dollars in donations to local organizations, including substantial donations to U Pass Regional Health District, the ambulance first responders, the Rampart Library District, and Habitat for Humanity. And third, at its own expense, the ministry has directly funded city infrastructure. It looped the water line that dead-ended at UC Health Hospital on Highway twenty-four. It was under, under no obligation to do so. It did that to ensure that the hospital would not experience water shortages or water pressure issues. It has funded an anti-human trafficking task force in the Teller County Sheriff's Office, and it has just recently helped fund the Fire Protection District's wildfire prevention efforts, to name just three. These contributions to the community are in addition to the huge economic boon the ministry has been for the city of Woodland Park. By 2030, the ministry will be the direct supporter of nearly fifteen hundred good-paying jobs and over nine, ninety million dollars in income for the city. What's more, and this is totally irrelevant to the question at hand, but what's more, the city will receive a projected six-point-three million dollars in sales and use tax revenue over the next ten years as a result of the ministry's presence in the city. These kinds of substantial economic benefits are, are why, far from trying to extract payments from not-for-profit colleges, cities across the country in the state of Colorado go out of their way to incentivize colleges putting campuses in their communities. To conclude, ten years have passed since the commission thought it was a lawful idea, a reasonable idea, to require the ministry to compromise its religious character and give up its rights to tax exemption. That was mistaken. Condition fourteen and its privatization requirement are non-feasible, illegal, and unenforceable. This planning commission generated the idea, generated condition fourteen in 2012, and so the condition should make a course correction tonight. We ask you to recommend to the city council to remove condition fourteen as an unlawful condition on land, land use approval. So I welcome your comments for either John or me now, but those are my prepared remarks.
Thank you.
I actually do have a question. One of the things that I brought up to the fire chief was, what are some plans that are being made or thought? And I understand you might not be able to answer them tonight, and that's fine. It's a little bit more food for thought. A part of, I think, is the growing pains in terms of your fire and your safety. And so, yes, all those things are nice, and, and we appreciate those. So please don't, please don't take this wrong. But we're wondering if there are any other additional plans, maybe, to help some of those growing pains in terms of, you know, calls or maybe the fire department coming out onto the campus?
I, I can't speak to specific ideas being formulated within, in the ministry along those lines this evening. I know that there is some dispute in the specific data about calls at Charis, and I think the number's a bit lower from our records than perhaps what's been in the public. So I can speak to that. But I, I, in terms of specific kind of mitigation efforts, I don't have a comment on that right now.
Okay, that's fair. And just like I said, food for thought, nothing that you have to answer to me.
In your discussion, actually, right at the beginning of discussion, you summarized, you summarized condition fourteen, referring to student housing, we privatize, we lease, or some other arrangements, we separate taxed. Only peripherally addressed and suggesting vagueness, but first half, could you comment on some of your arguments, focus particularly on that? The applicant agrees that housing will be temporary student housing, not permanent housing. What does it mean? What is your view of it? What?
It's a, it's a very good question, I appreciate it. Our focus has been primarily on the privatization and taxation piece, because those are very clear rights of the ministry. However, the discussion around temporary student housing and what that means is a good example of, I think, this commission and the city council not having thought through fully what the terms of condition fourteen actually mean. If it, if it did mean that we were to build modular buildings for a short period of time, and then we'd be able to build permanent buildings that were tax-exempt, we would obviously support that reading of the condition, and, and that's what I understand. At least one of the commissioners was suggesting the meaning was. But I, as far as I know, it's, it's more along the lines of typical student housing for a college, where, you know, it would be, you know, semester. But that's, that's my understanding, and I, and I don't want to commit the ministry to that this evening.
That's exactly how I read it, is referring to student, student housing, not permanent housing, apartment buildings for other, whatever, other people. So I was wanting, it seemed to me those were separable, and I was trying to understand specific objections have to the first, first part of that, if it was indicating it's normal student, student housing as opposed to other types of housing, particularly permanent housing for, for non-students.
I can't commit the ministry to any particular reading of temporary, but that would be my understanding, and I think that they would be open to that as well.
Mr. Chair, I have comments, not questions, and, um, and I will ask Chairman Hartsfield to comment if he, if he recalls that time. Chairman Hartsfield, myself, and Commissioner Larson were on the planning commission at the time the discussions occurred about the P U D for Charis and the ministry. Mr. Bozeman, by the way, was not the head of construction. Mr. Bozeman was listed as the operations officer for Charis, and that is on the website, by the way. What I do recall is that it was never a suggestion by the planning commission to privatize student housing or faculty housing. There was a discussion about faculty housing as well. I don't recall that there was a distinction between temporary housing, such as mobile homes or tiny homes. It was always about student housing. And there was never any initiative by the planning commission at the time to say, "You will privatize your housing." As for your comment about privatized housing on federal property or tax-exempt property, you'll discover that nearly every military base in the United States now privatizes housing, and they do have very specific requirements about who can have access to that housing. But what did happen in October, and as I said, sometimes my memory is fading, but I went back and checked my notes because I'm a hoarder. In October of two thousand and eleven, when we had some of our first discussions with Mr. Bozeman, who took us, took the planning commissioners in a beat-up bus from the Teller Senior Center out to that beautiful piece of property, we, we did talk about the concerns for wildfire mitigation, being a good neighbor to the county residents that are in Westwood, where their water was coming. And I was very aware that they were going to do the, the loop for water service for the hospital. And I thought that was a terrific initiative on the ministry's part. But when we talked about the student housing, and it was Mr. Bozeman's suggestion that possibly to mitigate the loss of property tax, not to the city, but to the other taxing districts, that it might be possible to privatize the student housing, and at that time, a discussion of faculty housing. So in October, this may be where the confusion comes from. A Mr. Gary Erickson, who was a Colorado Springs developer, came forward and briefed the planning commission, saying that, at that point in time, Mr. Womack had changed his mind about the student housing, and he did want to privatize it. And the recommendation from Mr. Erickson, who was, I would say, if you wanted to characterize him as a construction chief, maybe that was his title, but Mr. Bozeman was definitely the operations chief for Charis at the time. He suggested that a consortium or a group of like-minded members of the staff and of folks that were associated with the ministry would form their own corporation, and they would be responsible for this small set aside for student housing in order for that piece of property to then pay property tax under some, some land zoning designation that the county and the state would figure out. So I'm only bringing this up not to argue with you, but to point out that some of us were here then, you were not. And those were the discussions that were held by the planning commission, which was then passed on to the, the city council.
May I respond? I, I appreciate that very much, I wasn't here in 2012.
This was in 2011.
I'm sorry, in 2011, excuse me. I, I want to respond to a couple of those points. First of all, with military bases, it's a, it's not an analogous scenario. If you were to go to the University of Notre Dame, at every, in every dormitory at the University of Notre Dame, a Catholic college, there's a priest that lives on every hall, right? No private entity could afford priests to minister to the students at Notre Dame. Similarly, here, there's no private entity that can do Bible studies and fellowships. So that goes to the point around, it's, it's not workable, it's not feasible. A military base is not an analogous situation. I take your point on the planning commission meeting minutes, but I, I read, I read those minutes differently. And what it looks like to me is Mr. Bozeman suggesting that it had, it was something that the ministry had considered in 2012. I think that's accurate to say, considered is a very important verb there, however. It was this commission, by contrast, that required it of the ministry. It was the commission with the advice from their attorney, saying, "Can we put this in as a condition of approval? Can we force you to waive your rights?" So I, I think the record is slightly different in that regard.
And I, I don't want to be argumentative, but I will correct you once again. The commission did not recommend privatization, Mr. Bozeman did. And in a publication in the Color, in Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Indy, they quoted, Mr. Womack is saying, he wanted to be a good neighbor and agreed to privatization. Full stop.
I think our position's clear on that, but we disagree, we disagree. And, and I think the, the meeting minutes from the 2012 Planning Commission and the city council, and I can point you to those provisions, but they're different than what you're stating to this evening. I don't mean to be argumentative either.
But you are. Excuse me.
Mr. Hartman, did you have any questions?
Say it loudly.
If, if, if not, actually, I was.
Hand up.
Does he? Oh.
Mr. Hartsfield has his hands up.
Hartsfield, yes. Just, just to follow up, to clarify. Unfortunately, I was not on planning commission at the time that this first came forward in 2012. So I don't have a direct recollection of what was discussed or the intent at that point. I guess to, to move forward, if, in fact, clause fourteen is not appropriate, the concern I see is the support of the Teller County Fire Department, or Northeast Teller County Fire. So if we're not going to implement criteria fourteen, does the ministry propose a way to mitigate the impact on the committee, community? As that's one of the things we're supposed to look at, is mitigation and the impact of use for the C U P.
Thank you for your question. The, the first answer is, the impact, the benefit, the impact of the ministry is totally irrelevant to the land use question you have before you. You are empowered to make land use decisions. And like I said, both the United States Supreme Court and the Colorado Supreme Court have made crystal clear that public benefit or lack thereof or of a not, not-for-profit entity has no relevant, relevance to land use. And, and, and I'll, I'll respond to your second question, I don't mean to interrupt, excuse me, but if the YMCA wants to build a new gymnasium in Colorado Springs, the question is not asked, "How many more fire calls are they going to get?" They, they are simply not, they're tax-exempt under state law. It's not something that this Colorado Springs City Council can, can consider. But even though it's not relevant, I do think the fact that the ministry is going to produce six-point-three million dollars in sales and use tax over the next decade is relevant, is at least some response to your question. I think I heard the fire chief say that they need eighty-eight thousand dollars a year to fund new individual firemen. That's a question of the city count, the city financial code? I don't, and the tax structure of the city? It's not a question of land use. So the city can determine how to administer its financial situation, but it's not something that is relevant to the land use question here.
Mr. Chair, if I can comment on that as well. The reason I asked Chief Tyler to, or Chief Lambert to come up and talk about how the district, the fire district is funded, it is completely through property tax. Mill levy has nothing to do with sales tax revenue. And what he is suggesting is that adding that many more souls to this community will require more fire service. And therefore, he wanted to be able to compensate his district with something, whether it's mill levy or payment in lieu of taxes.
I, I understand that concern, I think it's misplaced, to be, to be honest.
Do you live in Woodland Park? No.
It's, it's misplaced because it's not relevant to land use approval.
It absolutely is.
I'm happy to finish the my response. It it is not something you're empowered to consider. To be very clear, you have limited jurisdiction and you have no power to consider our tax revenue. With the fact of the matter is, is the issue has been taken away from you. By the Colorado legislature and the Colorado constitution. I'm happy to show you those provisions. I think it's absolutely something you should consider as a land use commission or the city council, how you divvy up tax funds. I think that's absolutely a relevant consideration. But forcing a religious ministry to forego its religious character is not a relevant way, is not a lawful or relevant way for you to achieve that end.
And sir, I would argue that we are not asking anyone to give up their religious beliefs. In order to cover the fire service for our district. I don't care if there's a coven of Wiccans over there. We are concerned with the ability of our fire district to respond to any fire call, whether it's from Womack. Whether it's from the elementary school or from my house. And the ability of our fire district is impacted by the fact they're not receiving. Additional mill levies for fire service from a very, very large parcel of land with a large number of people existing there. Full stop. I don't need any more of your explanations.
Can I? Can I ask Mr. Romero again?
Chairman, can you speak a little louder than the microphone, please?
And this is actually a subject which. Commissioner Hartsfield commented earlier, brought up and it was addressed to someone. It seems unusual when building under our definition has. Would as as proposed would have a height of thirty nine and a half feet. Asked for forty five foot, that's. It's only five and a half feet, but in our in our business, that's a lot. I mean, people worry. Lot of homeowners have an issue with their twenty nine feet. Gee, maybe actually maybe thirty one feet would be better. That's an awful lot, particularly this proposed. That this would apply. To both these dorms and future dorms when it's a month. It seems to be a large request. Is there is there some some real uncertainty here or some? Is this just sort of extra, just in case?
So if if we had that slide back up, I would I would show you, there is a component of that that has a three story element to that building that is forty five feet. So we went by the letter of the code, which kind of found the average, but initially the forty five started from that larger kind of three story. We are allowed. Three stories under the current PUD. So that's where the forty five thought came in also for potential future applications, but largely it was dictated by the fact that grading creates challenges on that site. And having to do that walkout created some challenges that I so that was the need because again, it's. There's always a challenge, I think, and we're seeing tonight, especially is when you come back and ask for more, right? So we wanted to plan forward for the potential of how the grading could potentially play into those three story buildings.
He knows it won't go over forty five if the building's only forty five, but he can't, he cares you where the ground's going to end up looking like.
Absolutely.
I I we liked it, so you give extra just so that.
Forcing the landscaping in the ground to be pushed up at certain spots in.
It sounds like we've pretty much finished the presentations.
Mr. Chair, vice chair, have some additional questions?
Oh, please.
Specifically regarding item one. So the seat, the condition to use permit was presented. And the location of the student housing is substantially in the same location as originally proposed, correct?
Yes, sir.
What has changed to make thirty five feet not adequate when it was in the original proposal? And you had basically your option to choose how tall these buildings are going to be. And now coming back and saying it's forty five instead of thirty five. So. My real question is, you asked for thirty five, we gave it to you. Now you're asking for forty five. And I'm looking for justification. Why? Because it's the same terrain, the same location. As originally proposed. What makes forty five? That much better for us?
Unfortunately, I can make an assumption here, but I don't know what the original plan was with that. I'd have to assume at that time, based on the current code with the thirty five foot maximum, that that's where that looked at that. Initially, because those that application at the time had not had any buildings designed, it had identified locations for housing. So I would assume that at that time that that was probably the thought is let's work with the thirty five foot. But based on architecture and I and I'm sure architect can give you a much better. Description, even when we do land use applications in any sense, we always think of fourteen foot, poor story, just based on. You know, mechanicals, all those types of things. So the thirty five is an odd request, but I would assume that it's because of the current code at the time.
Well, as a PUD, there is no current code and it's applicant, the set that mentions standards they require for their development. So I'm confused. What was originally proposed? And. Why this? Is required.
Yeah, and again, I can only speak to what with those not having buildings at the time and using typically when we build PUD zoning. Use areas, we try to look at. Other zone standards and work from that and find out where those restrictions are and how we can kind of make those more flexible to the current proposed use. But that's generally where those come from, but not being a part of that originally, I I can't really speak to that specifically.
My recollection, and I I don't know if it was in the final site plan for the PUD or the final development plan for the PUD. But originally the housing was discussed. That was discussed was to be cluster housing, more like. Small patio homes or duplexes and I don't recall that there was any height on any of those, but. I'm not even certain in a PUD and Karen, maybe you can answer this, that there is a height requirement. Or a height restriction.
The height, the the height standards get established as part of establishing the PUD. And when I look back at these past approvals in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fifteen. It just talks about student housing broadly. It doesn't. Other than what you've seen in the charts, it doesn't talk about apartment style building versus patio homes versus it. It doesn't break it down into any of that. It really just was buildings, this amount of square foot per floor and this number of stories, this maximum height.
I I don't remember it in the final development plan either, but I do remember a discussion very clearly of using. Smaller. Complexes or smaller with smaller buildings or duplexes, and that might have been. What the original plan had been intended, but I'm assuming now that the student population or the demographics of the populate student population is less about families. Which is what. We were originally told that the average, you know, gave an average age for for the students at the college and their family makeup. Really lended itself to maybe possibly using family housing and patio homes. But if the demographics of the college have changed and you have more single students who would. Be more appropriately housed in a dormitory style building, it's that's your call.
You the other housing types. You. I remember from a presentation that the Charis folks did the beginning of December to city council. Talked about both this property and the other PUD on the Sturman properties. I think that those other housing types were something. That were possibly looked at for the other PUD.
You may be right, Karen. I've got that presentation here, but I do remember originally that they talked about. More of a family style setting because that was the the makeup of the student enrollment at the time. But I, you know, it's neither here nor there. They've now decided it's more appropriate to house.
It did reference three stories on the thirty five foot line in that table. Ken, just for reference, I'm looking at that table.
And I I can speak up, give just a quick, I actually presented to you all. On a special hearing and city council in regards to their vision plan. The goal of the vision plan and has been from the onset to set a framework for development and plans in the future. So there is discussions of that, but now what those are at the end of the day, we haven't decided, but. That is something that I think Charis has put together in an effort to kind of give perspective. Of this land use of this PUD and how we kind of correct course from those past approvals.
John, are you talking about the current PUD or a new PUD for the new? The piece of property?
The original intent was to come in with this vision plan to set a framework. And then the goal is to amend the past Sturman PUD. As a lot of you know, there's a lot of challenges for that. When that Sturman PUD came into place, it had a completely different vision of what that property was, which was industrial use, which. I think Sally had pointed out, they haven't seen an industrial application in some years. So the idea is to course correct. And give a proper vision for the property, work with planning commission, work with city council. And find a way to answer these questions that we're trying to answer today in the correct manner so that we're not going back. And changing course. And so that's really what the vision set the framework for in hopes of doing.
Okay, before we move on to public comment, look at the clock and it's been a two hours from our scheduled meeting time. I think everyone needs a ten minute break for for relief for a moment.
But I guess before we do that. Our city attorney had. Notified me that she did want to interject or add add some some commentary.
I don't know, Karen. Not now. We could take a break, Karen. And then later on, like I said, thanks.
Okay, so at some point she will want to add to. Record. Recessing for ten minutes.
Thanks, Mom.
Okay, all right, mics are back on. Next, we're going to ask for comment, comment from the public. We do have perhaps twenty five or thirty names signed up now.
Excuse me, I apologize, Mr. Chair. You all were lovely and respectful during my presentation. We need that same decorum going forward. So my apologies, sir.
With the number here, we we have established for this evening a limit of three minutes per person. As it is that one may go on quite a while, there could be some additional additional people who will seek to speak. So, well, we will keep time that will ask you to. Show courtesy to everyone and stick within that. Please understand the comments you're making are addressed to the commission and. If you have some questions. Indicate those questions in your comments, but. We will not start a dialogue during your comments. When we're all done, we'll take notes of what those are and an opportunity for the commission to comment further or for the applicant to address things in his in in their rebuttal. With that, can we start with, and I'm by apologies any of these names if I'm misreading the printing here, Young Yulig. And as you start, please give your name and address and then. Please comment on the matters before the commission tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Young Yulig. I am currently a Charis student. And a resident in Woodland Park. I am registered to vote. I'm a US citizen. I'm also a proud land over landowner. And currently building a house, a home here. And I want to say I am very much in favor of you. Agreeing to these changes. In the PUD offer. What the students bring here is. Unquantifiable. And positive. When I first came here from the East Coast, I was horrified at how frankly ugly. The homes were in Colorado Springs and the lack of planning. When I drove onto this campus, it was a jewel. It is a jewel. I have remodeled on the East Coast. Four different residents. And. Wow, it's such a blessing to be here. I think that the student housing would introduce such a diversity. In population in terms of socioeconomically. Culturally, we have international students. And always when you have that cross pollinization, it is an enormously positive element in the community. So I really ask you and encourage you to. To say yes. To these changes. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a comment. There's no dis and this is not directed to you. I will not ask a question of anyone who comes up to the podium. The PUD. Changes do not dispute the need for student housing and student housing has been approved already. The PUD changes. Talk to the height of the housing and secondly, to whether or not the property on that, the property. Maybe privatized. So I would ask that anyone who comes up here is to those two issues only. There's no dispute about the value of this particular entity to the community. No one's talking about that. And we're not disputing the need for student housing. There absolutely is a need for student housing. Thank you.
Jean Harris. Once again, write your name and address as you're speaking.
My name is Jean Harris. My current address is one six four two Columbine Village Drive, Woodland Park, eight zero eight six three. I live here. I pay taxes here. I'm entitled to speak my mind. You don't get to tell me what I'm going to talk about.
Yes.
I am here to speak. I am here to speak.
You speak outside of the PUD application.
Speak in support of the student housing. I am here to speak in support of the student housing project at Charis Bible.
The student housing project has been approved.
I heard a resident of Woodland Park complaining about parking in the Columbine Village Drive area at the last I heard about this. I didn't hear it myself. Complaining about. Parking in the area of Columbine Village Drive. I don't disagree with that because like I said, I live there and it gets, it does get congested. The idea that it's. All Charis students fault, I think is not right. Why oppose housing that will provide a place for students to live? And if that means approving a forty five foot. Variance. Okay. While they attend Charis where they can park in the parking lots where they live. Pay local taxes as they shop in the community and augment the workforce in the community. This project to build homes to forty five homes, I'm sorry, student housing to a height of forty five feet. Will bring construction workers to the area, some of whom might live for already. Workers who will spend some portion of their paychecks here, that means tax dollars for the city and revenue for local businesses. There is a housing crunch here for permanent and temporary housing like students who come for a period of time. If to provide that housing requires a forty five foot variance, then I'm all for it. That seems like a pretty simple thing. They are going to come here to attend college at Woodland Park Bible College. Why not keep them here by providing a place for them to live? Instead of forcing them to go down and live in Colorado Springs and take their money with them. Let them spend it here. You know, city market, Walmart, Safeway, et cetera. Let's not let a forty five foot limit stand in our way. Charis has been a blessing as it's been set forth already to Woodland Park in many ways, including tax revenues. And housing on Charis property will have a positive impact in many ways on this community. I'm asking that you approve the housing project. I do not want my tax dollars going to defend a potential lawsuit. For any reason, forty five feet. Or the matter of law. Stating that.
Thank you, sir.
We are.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that my full three minutes?
That was your, if you'd like to look. Okay, I promise.
I want to thank you all for my. Opportunity to speak. My name is Maria Carpenter. I am a resident of Woodland Park. I live at twenty two thirty eight Big Pines Avenue, Woodland Park, eight zero eight six three. I have been a resident, my husband and I since. May two thousand and nineteen. And I am in support of the forty five foot variance. So I'm just gonna give a brief background. I was the lead teacher of an after school STEM program in Fort Worth, Texas, STEM in science, technology, engineering and mathematics. Also, the arts were added into that. After being accepted into Tarleton University. Their marriage and family counseling grad program. I saw the need to care for my elderly parents and chose them over grad school. Before that, I held positions such as Assistant Director of Crisis Pregnancy Center. Was an advocate and speaker. was an advocate and speaker for abstinence and spoke with the lives, into the lives of high school and middle school students as well as those in detention centers. I was also an ESL teacher for at-risk students. Those employees and school officials saw the value of what was on the inside of me that I can only attribute to my faith and love for Jesus Christ. And now as a Caris Bible College Enrollment Counselor, I bring that same value, respect, and love to every, or sorry, to every incoming student that I have the privilege to talk to and encourage. Students from all nations and all walks of life. From year one, year two, and year three, I see with my own eyes the transformation in the hearts of our students. Personal, spiritual, growth, stability that emerges from applying the Word of God to every situation. The same value, respect, and love I pour into students is that same value, respect, and love I pour into my community. I love and respect Woodland Park, so much so that I rarely even go down to the Springs, but once every two to three months. So I spend a lot of money here. Just ask my husband. I am only one example of many who have gained greatly from this ministry and school. My marriage of 16 years is healthy because of this school and the Word of God that's taught here. There are so many hurting misguided people in this world, broken humanity. And there are few resources that can impact lives on as grand a scale as Caris. My heart is that we come together as a loving, united community to help make this world a better place. Where lives are restored, marriages are healed, where we are truly loving our neighbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am. Brenda Reyno.
And again, this last speaker started out addressing the two questions that we have to consider tonight. Thank you so much for that. Please make sure that you keep your topic to that, or you will be called off.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us today. I
Your name and your address, please?
Yes, I'll get to that too. My name is Brenda Di Amo, 505 Forest Ed Road, Woodland Park. I've been in the part of the community for five years. I've actually worked for the ministry for 17 years. And part of being about the ministry, I know Andrew's integrity. So you guys I know are kind of a little concerned about the fire and hazards and stuff like that. I know Andrew's heart is to serve the community to the best of his ability. So I guarantee even though taxes shouldn't be a part of it, Andrew's going to be helping out with that. Knowing Andrew's integrity and who he is as a person, he constantly gives to the community all the time. And also I'm a part of a PTO of a local school and I've seen Andrew give to that school to help to build a fence around the building. He sends volunteers out regularly, regularly and gives a lot of people to help. And he as a part of the ministry, he also sends out requests that the community needs helps and says, please help the community. So knowing Andrew as long as I have, I know that definitely he's going to help with whatever he can within the law, not limiting him from his rights. So I know Andrew is definitely going to step up and help the community in any way, shape, and form, just what we've already seen, like you talked about the water pipes. I'm not exactly familiar completely with that, but I know the integrity of Andrew and it is to serve and love the community. And I love being part of this ministry. And I think everybody knows that by opening up the facilities, even if it's 45 feet, it doesn't matter because I know the beauty of the ministry. If you even go step on the campus, you see the beauty of that ministry. And 45 feet, he's going to make sure that it's going to retain that beauty of that area. So if you look at Andrew and who Andrew is and his integrity in his past, he's going to try to keep those things of who he is, to keep that beauty, he's going to also make sure that the community is taken care of the way it needs to, but within his rights. So please do not refrain him from his rights, but make sure that you put the thoughts of who Andrew is into that and not think about how you can limit what he's doing for this community. Because he's going to help the community greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Travis. Is Travis still here? Stephen Storrs.
My name is Steve Storrs. I live at Eddie Broken Wheel Place and Divide. I am a 67 year resident of Teller County and I oppose both of these proposals. The building height variance request will impair view corridors. I don't care if it's a foot or 18 inches. Anytime you have to look through a building, you can't see what's on the other side. It's gonna ruin the view corridor from Highway 24 looking north. The student housing taxation question is more troubling to me. Caris made an agreement with the city during initial approval of their development. Student housing would be taxed so that emergency services would have a revenue stream compensating them for the major impact that this campus has had on the community. Taxpayers should not be held responsible for these impacts. Caris's economic benefits to the community are unverifiable and they need to be held responsible for at least a portion of the hardship that they have brought to Teller County. A mega church with millions in income can afford and should be compelled to help mitigate at least a portion of their negative impact. The original agreement should stand. It is a Christian thing to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Karen Cheryl. Do you want to turn the microphone down?
Sorry, short people problems. All I have to say is, I'm sorry.
Name and address, please.
Karen Cheryl, 924 Stone Park Lane, Woodland Park, Louisiana, Colorado.
We know where you came from.
You can tell. I just want to speak to the height. The front side is the short side. It really won't be any difference that I can see to causing a problem with being able to see the, you know, it going to 45 feet because that's down the hill and there's not going to be anybody down the hill. That's the way I can see it. The other thing is the taxation. I came here, a widow that had sold everything because God said, you need to go. This is where you need to be. And so that's where I am. This is hugely expensive place compared to Louisiana. Everything's three times as much and you know, I could be living in a mansion for what I'm paying at my apartment. So it's really necessary, the way that the ministry has dealt in everything that's, you know, what the students are going to have to pay makes it where it's possible for people that don't have a lot of money to come. And they're not going to be out looking on the streets wanting to know, can you give me some money? You know? Andrew really wants to take people that are broken and hurting and disciple them into people that can really be an asset to the United States and the world. So, thank you.
Thank you. Erin Helsford.
Evening. I'd like a point order real quick. Vice Chair, are you in charge here or is Ms. Carol? Because I want one person addressing so I know instead of the confusion of multiple people talking.
Well, I'm acting chair tonight, but you shouldn't be addressing me. You should be addressing the entire commission.
Well, I'm just asking because she seems to be holding time, but you seem to be holding the list. If we could have one talking head, that would help me. Thank you.
Please get your name and address.
Erin Helsford, 47, 33, County Road 33, Woodland Park. I'm a retired Marine, so I'm kind of brass tacks. And I've listened to the arguments that are presented tonight. And the biggest one with concern is over the fire chief and an apparatus to receive or to take people from a 45 foot building. My question is trail parks is 45 feet. So how is he retrieving people from there already if he doesn't already have an apparatus? Which I would assume he does. Therefore, why the additional apparatus to service 240 students at Caris? Secondly, this community is big on tourism. It's one of the reasons I came here. I love the outdoor activities. In this time of season, how many calls is our fire department going out and servicing transient people from the Springs and around the United States that are getting hurt here, lost here, and stranded here? Are we taxing them? Second thing, with regards to the law, I fought 22 years to defend the Constitution of the United States. We are a republic, a constitutional republic. And when I see a committee overstepping its boundaries that have been legislated and dictated, has been clearly articulated tonight by the lawyers, I have concern. I have a concern as a citizen watching a body, a committee, not an elected body, a committee who is overstepping their boundaries and going into taxation. These are things that are elected officials in Woodland Park should be discussing, and it's not you, the committee. And the fact that you keep bringing it up and the fact that you keep bringing it up shows me that you're not looking at what the law states. You have right and left lateral limits. When I was in the Gulf War, General Magnus said, bowl your own lane. So what do you mean by that, sir? This is your area of expertise. You have left and right lateral limits. When you go outside of them and you start talking about things that are not your purview, you show yourself to be a fool. Let's bowl our lane. Thank you.
Hi, my name is not under this. Can I speak, please?
When we'll get, we'll give an opportunity to
All right then, thank you.
Althea Devonish.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Althea Devonish. I live at 808 Stone Park Lane, apartment 300, Woodland Park. I've been here for four years. My, I moved from South Florida and I moved here to come to Caris. I must admit that this is a very nice city to start with and I am, I'm really blessed by the the beauty of the of the city. And what really sparked me, and I'm going to talk from this point, when the riots were going on and, you know, with the BLM riots, I saw a billboard that says we don't, that black lives are not the only ones that matter. Every life matters. And so I want to talk about the young people, the things that the young people are going through these days. Young people are being pressured. They have, you know, they are being faced with drugs. They are being oppressed. They go into depression and a lot of activities, a lot of things that are against our young people. And what I see, but what Andrew's doing, he's trying to build those houses for young people because most times because of the price of housing here, it is difficult for a young person to come here and be able to pay, you know, and stay for even for two or three years. So I want to thank you for looking into that and approving it and approving the size, the height of the building as well as, you know, doing all that you can to make sure that the young people here are having, you know, are given an opportunity to have a good life. Also, Caris is not only just for teaching spiritual things. They teach you how to be a good patriot, how to love your country. First is how to love God, how to love yourself, how to be, how to love your parents, how to love those around you and how to love your country. And this, this ministry constantly gives to the, to the, not only this community, but to the entire United States of America and even the world, because people come in from different places because of all the different conferences they have and all the conferences are free. So I want to thank you that you are willing to be a part of helping this, you know, helping change lives of the younger people especially. And all the people that come, they are more established and they have money that they can probably pay the rents that you, you know, that is being asked. But for young people who want to start, 18, 19 year olds, you know, who don't have the money, but but need to change and their parents are ready to invest in them and they themselves want to invest in themselves. I just want to say thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you for helping us and thank you for, you know, helping our future because the young people, they are our future. I'm without them, this America, if we don't invest in them, in them, this America will not last. So thank you again for everything and thank you for allowing us to come and express our views. And that's one of the things that America allows, even though we might have differences of opinion, but we can express them and share our views and then you make a decision. So God bless you. God bless all my residents and God bless America.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Again, could you remind us of what the city attorney told us about discussions tonight that this discussion should center on land use only and not on the value of particular entity?
I guess what I say and said, it's most helpful to the commission if comments from the public do address the issues before us. Change from 35 to 45 foot and the height restriction for student dormitories and addressing condition 14 that we discussed. But people's manner of expressing that, what they're indicating, you know, can, can, can be supportive of that in various ways. I hope the commission will keep in mind, you know, being circumspect in this discussion, but the public is going to be, it'll be more, is going to be tend to indicate what their feelings are related to.
Thank you, Lee. And I just want to remind everyone, we're not debating student housing. That's been approved as part of the approved PUD. What we're talking about are two conditions of that PUD that the applicant has asked us to review. And one of those was the height of a building. And then secondly, whether or not housing should be privatized in order to collect property taxes, not sales taxes. So please, I would just ask, because we're going to be here a long time if we go off on a tangent about something else besides those two issues. Thank you.
No, actually, actually, you're going to have time without, a lot of time limit for rebuttal.
Well, it's relevant to the question of whether or not people can address the public benefit of Caris. Let me just say something very briefly, because I think it matters, right?
The fact of the matter is, is that this commission by imposing condition 14, which takes into account the public benefit of Caris and the public burden of Caris, has called that issue into, into, into issue for public comment. That's my only thing to say, but I would just point out that it does actually, it is relevant to the question before the commission this evening.
You will have an opportunity for rebuttal when the question or when the public hearing is over.
Joe Swerengen. Did you get that name right?
My name is Joe Swerengen. My wife Tess and I live at 116 West Midland Avenue. And we love Woodland Park, Colorado. We celebrate in July, five years of having a church. We've never been asked to pay, we're, we're a nonprofit. We've never been asked to, to pay any kind of taxes. We own a coffee shop in town and we gladly pay our taxes every single. It's whether it's every two weeks or every month that that is deducted out. And this ministry changed my life and I just, I just want to, you know, I just want to ask that you just approve this, get this done so that the building can begin before winter comes and the, and we have problems digging up the ground and, and the Bible college, I believe personally, is the best thing that ever happened to Colorado. And so I just, I'm just asking again, let's just, let's just get this thing moving forward and just see, see the good that comes from it.
Seth Emerson. Jody Akers. Tim Northrup.
Tim Northrup, N O R T H R U P, 120 Golden Court, Woodland Park. Thank you for this time. When I first heard about this about two months ago, I was kind of really concerned about this issue with the taxable property. I couldn't believe that it was actually there. As I dug into it and got receipts or not receipts, but documents from the planning commission or the city, I found out that yes, indeed, there was a decision made in 2012. And I guess I was kind of appalled to that. And I realize now reading through legal arguments and case studies, that definitely there was an error made in 2012 or 2015. that definitely there was an error made in two thousand and twelve or two thousand and fifteen, whatever it was. And so I urge you to make a decision and make a recommendation to the city council that number fourteen be removed. And that should be non-taxable. I mean, if you look at the law, it's pretty straightforward. That's kind of obvious. As far as the forty-five foot height, I would say that is definitely a good option to have because that will give some, I mean, from what I see in the drawings, it looks like that was definitely a good architectural drawing. And the forty-five foot should be changed. I mean, maybe at the time, the thirty-five foot was what they thought was proper. And as Carol had mentioned, it may have been with family housing. But now that there's other housing and they actually have drawings, it looks like the forty-five would be a better fit. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope I'm not being timed for a technical.
No, no, I know that I can get it for you. It's not a problem.
Well, I'm setting in the wrong code on the wrong telephone, so that's definitely my problem.
We'll, we'll time you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I got it.
So, okay. So this is going to be very good.
Why don't you just trust us? Give us your name and address.
I will do, sir. With pleasure. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Osa Graves. I live in five hundred Forest Edge Circle. So thank you so much for taking the time and doing this. This is a very important issue and with both the subjects here. When we look at the height of the forty-five, when you took the senior bus out there and did a tour, as things have been changed and you could see in the everything that has been presented, you will know and see that when you look into it, you will not see that the forty-five is going to destroy the view in any way. So take that in consideration, what has been presented and how it will actually look. And if you have any further questions regarding that, please talk to the architect so you can have a clear picture of what the forty-five will actually mean in reality. So please go ahead and vote yes for that, that we can go ahead and start building forty-five. As we have another buildings here in town as well. So who am I? I'm an international student that came over here. I have the pleasure that I lived in Woodland Park for two years. I love this place. I have been in different schools around the world. But at my age at fifty, I now have the privilege to be at this Bible college. So when it comes to constitutions, I became an American citizen. I had to go through and swear in and read your history. There are laws here, the US Constitution, the the Colorado one that states what is right and wrong in these situations. And we also have been quoted for what Woodland Park have said regarding these questions with tax exemptions. So in your positions, it's not so much about what the different things have been presented back in two thousand and fifteen. It's what does the law say? We were clearly presented here with three different laws that states that we have tax exemptions. So to come in and change the law, if you have that position, that's one thing. But otherwise, please, we all love Woodland Park. Please do what is right according to the law. We don't need to debate the other things. So thank you so much for doing the right thing as I do the right thing as a citizen and I had to do when I was born to become an American. So I trust you in this. God bless you all and God bless you. Thank you.
What was the name again? Say the name again.
Charles Graves.
I wanted to address the economic impact.
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Charles Graves, five hundred Forest Edge Circle. I'm a registered voter here in the city of Woodland Park. And as far as economic impact, we rent a home here. The person who leases their home to us would not maintain this property if it wasn't for Charis. They moved here, built a house here. The builder who built their home, that builder also lives in the community. We get our cars fixed here. We go to the cleaners here. We do our shopping here. We're clearly contributing to the, to the city as far as taxes. And as far as the view, if you are, the only people who will see those buildings are people who are on the property. That's it. So, I mean, as far as I could tell, this is crazy because no other college town is asking their college to pay taxes. I've never seen it anywhere. I went to the University of Georgia. And when I went there, no one complained that in Athens, Georgia, that the University of Georgia was paying taxes or was not paying taxes for their student housing. I just think it's nuts.
Sean Kennedy. Kyle Garen.
I'm Kyle Garen and I live at seventy-four Westwood Trace. And I just want to start off thanking each of you for tonight, for this, this hearing. Thank you guys for your service. I have been a public servant. I know there's times it can be a thankless job, but I'm sure you wanted to spend your night with us anyways. So my family and I came here because of Charis. So obviously, you know, we're, we're in support of the two amendments tonight. It's been a blessing to be part of this community. We love being here. As far as the change from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet, I think that's minimal. I don't think it's going to be seen from any of the the major roadways. And I think that was even the staff recommendation, if I remember right, but it shouldn't affect anybody except on campus. And then for the other issue, you know, I think one thing that we probably haven't addressed enough tonight is privatization and how that's just not going to work at this point. That's not really an option. So how are we going to move forward? Are we going to keep kicking the can down? I don't know how city council is going to respond. But what are the, what are the options to alleviate the housing crunch as much as possible? I'm a realtor as well. And so I definitely have dealt with that quite extensively, know about the, the rent prices, very familiar with that. So I would just encourage you guys to pass on a recommendation that we go ahead and make that amendment as well. Thank you.
John, John Davis.
Good evening. I'm John Davis. We live at two four zero Eagle Pines Drive here within the city. We moved here four years ago for my wife to attend Charis Bible College and we've remained here since then. We support the recommendation for the height change to forty-five feet for the different reasons that you've heard here tonight. And as, and as your staff has aptly recommended. Also, I agree with Mr. Nussman that the taxation portion or privatization for taxation is not legal. But I also agree, I disagree with him in the standpoint that I don't think you should make a recommendation to the council. I think your staff, along with your attorney, has made an excellent recommendation to you. It's not within your purview. Was it within your purview in two thousand and twelve? And the ultimate decision is going to be made by the city commission. Thank you for your service tonight and for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir. Last, the people that signed up here, is there someone else here that wish to sign up or wish to speak still? Sir, could you let it be, please? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I get that signup sheet to have folks enter their name and address when they do this, please? Thank you.
My name is Patience. I'm from the United Kingdom. And I came here last year to study at Charis Bible College. I love Woodland Park and I have gained from Charis Bible College. And I want to thank you beautiful people that in two thousand and eleven and twelve, you made a decision and you approved of the student dormitories to be built. What I would like to say is it doesn't matter how we got to where we are. What with regards to privatization of the dormitories, it can't work. Because as students, we need to have fellowship together. We need to have Bible studies together. We have to have time to sing together in the evening. If you privatize these dormitories, we won't be able to have that. So please do approve of it not being privatized. And even if it came for, from Charis or from whomever it came from, we can move forward and making sure that, okay, to privatize is not an issue. I'm sure you can work with the lawyers and yourselves and you great people to make sure, okay, privatization of these dormitories is not going to happen because we need to be together and that won't happen. And the second issue I was going to say is that with regards to the heights, well, I live at Trail Ridge, nine twenty Stone Park Lane, apartment three zero one. And if the height is forty-five, within your goodwill, I'm sure you can approve that too. And I want to say thank you for this time being with us and as being able to hear your thoughts and as expressing ourselves, but please do approve. Thank you so much.
Hello, it's a pleasure to be here and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Virginia Tornello and I'm new here to Woodland Park. And I will be a fall student at Charis. And I understand the board's concerns, first on the forty-five foot building. I see that it's relative to the beautiful construction and engineering that has been planned. And the architecture at Charis is the most beautiful I've ever seen. So it adds beauty and functionality for the students and blends in with the geographical area. It's yet not taller than the trees. So I think we're okay there. So I think it's a win-win. Thank you. I also see your concern with adding more fire help as police help, as the community grows. And I completely understand how those funds would come through property taxes. But being new here, I see several beautiful homes that are ready to be built. And I encourage the board to plan more communities, condominiums, homes, to be able to facilitate families coming here that are in need of a beautiful dwelling. And then that in turn will relieve the funding for for our first responders. And this is something that in your expertise, I'm sure that you'll all be able to facilitate. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak and have a good evening.
Did you put your name and address on the sheet so we get spelling?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jody Akers, nine oh four Stone Park Lane, Woodland Park. I think that, I understand being a small mountain town that y'all might have not necessarily wanted this, you know, huge thing happening in your area. Progress is very difficult. I've moved three different places now because of progress. I do think that a lot of the Charis students are buying homes here and buying real estate here and starting businesses here. And so they are paying property taxes on their homes. And so they are contributing. And I do think that the taxes with the fire and the police will work out. And I do think that the architecture at Charis is absolutely beautiful. I, I think for the community, the conferences are insanely wonderful. People come from all over to code at the conferences. They're free. It's something Andrew does do for the community that you could partake in. So we do try to give back. I know you're going to have a lot of homeless people up here out on Rampart Range Road. And the last two years, I've been out there with focus on the forest. And I clean up after all those homeless people and all that mess out there, the shooting range out there on Turkey, whatever, on sixty-seven. And so I have volunteered for so many of the ministries around here, the food pantry out there and divide in the middle of winter, boxing up food for those families, praying for them. So you know, we really do try to have a conscience about what we're doing here with your community. We're not being hard-hearted. I'm not like saying we're going to do what we're going to do and the heck with you. We don't care how you feel. Like I said, I, I was in Steamboat Springs for thirty years and, you know, the first seventeen, we had it to ourselves. And then came progress. And so I understand what happens and I, I have a heart for you. So I'm just saying thank you for welcoming us in your community. And I hope we can work together because I think we all have the same heart. So thank you for having us.
Think now. Go quick.
My name is Susan Geiger. I live at two five six County Road, seven eighty-one, Woodland Park, Colorado, eight oh eight six three. I am not inside the city, but the city supports me as a member of Teller County. I'm going to first off say, I have no problem with you guys personally. I have never had a problem. I mean, my family has been in ministries for years. My grandmother for over ninety years before she died. So I really appreciate a lot of the things you do. But this is the problem. I have listened to how many years you have been here. I have been a resident for twenty years. My husband, longer than that, twenty-five years. You guys, I have heard five at the most. You have no clue what this town was before Charis was here. And it's not my choice to pay extra taxes. I am a retired colonel from the army. Thank you for your service, the Marines who came up here and talked. I, after that, I became a social worker. So all the wonderful moral virtue signaling, let's get past that. I have no problem with the housing. We need housing here. The lack of housing has disrupted the economy of this small town, small town. We are not Colorado Springs with eight hundred thousand people. We are twenty-five thousand in town. We grow exponentially because of Charis. All right? And we can't absorb it the way that Andrew wants us to absorb it. That's a problem. I, the forty-five foot, honestly, I have no problem with it other than this is going to be attached to any future buildings. Andrew has been making promises. I was here in two thousand and eleven. I was here in two thousand and twelve. I was here in two thousand and fifteen when he keeps breaking his promises. I actually had online conversations with Mr. Bozeman about the fires here. I have been through the Hayman and I have been through the Waldo. If you'd like, I can show you the picture of my house with the ashes falling. That was in Newsweek. That was our house. So yes, it's a very big deal. Now that I'm retired again, I'm not paying for your services. This is about services. That's why Bozeman and everyone else, to include Andrew, ten years ago said, "We're going to privatize. We're going..." 10 years ago said, "We're going to privatize. We're going to help give back." This is another broken promise from Andrew. Yes, we need housing here. We need it desperately because he's been telling us for 10, 15 years or from when this whole thing was in his brain that he was going to create housing.
Ma'am, thank you for your time.
Sign in, too. Was there anyone else in the room who didn't wish to comment?
Lenea Mellinger and I live at 232 Alignai Drive. That's in Westwood Lakes, right next to Caris. I work at Andrew Womack Headquarters and I walk to work. The area where the housing is going to be done, I have walked that for the last two months. And that 45-foot, the 10-foot difference is not going to make a difference. There is woods all the way around that area and that's all I have to say. So please approve. Thank you.
Would you sign in? Would you sign? Sir, you've already spoken. Is there somewhere in the back? Sir, you've already spoken. Sir, you've already spoken. Thank you, sir.
I did stop the timer and I actually-
Yes, she's been giving time. She's been excluding time from the beginning when people were introducing themselves and for other reasons like that. You've had your time, please. Do allow someone else to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mac McVicker. I live at 13719 Hetty Road, Woodland Park, Colorado. I'm going to start with just a short quote. And above all, be honest and fair in the game of life. Where did that come from? I was a farm boy. That was my ending line in the FFA creed. And I have a challenge for Caris here tonight on the non-tax status. You've thrown out hints and intimations of all the money you put back in this community. I don't know if they're right or wrong. You could have avoided this whole thing on the second thing tonight if you had agreed to help this small community with payment in lieu of taxes. You quoted Notre Dame, South Bend, Colorado College in Colorado Springs. As a percentage of those communities, what it costs the fire department there to provide protection and support to those people is miniscule. But up here, you're the elephant in the room. You really are. So why is it so hard to give, once the county and state assessors assess your property, payment in lieu of taxes? If you had done that, none of this would be happening tonight. None of it. I'm not against Caris. I'm not against the people I know from Caris. I'm a Christian myself. I have led service at the Methodist Church in this town four times. I've led Bible study. I'm on your side. But you have an undue impact on the finances of this community as it relates to how we protect this community against a fire like Paradise, California, the Dixie Fire. All you've got to do is help us out. Remember, Mr. Nussman, you kept speaking of sales tax, use tax, even when Ms. Harvey was telling you the fire department is funded by property tax. For some reason, you had a hard time grasping that. Don't know why. But help us out here. Is that so hard to do? That's my challenge to you. And I'm going to go back to that quote again. Above all, be honest and fair in the game of life. Thank you.
See, one more. No, I see two. I think we're down to three, so we don't really need to-
Hello. My name is Jill Stabino and I live at 175 Piney Point Lane in Woodland Park. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I just felt led as this was going on. I am a homeowner, taxpayer, and registered voter. I support the height of 45 feet and I am against the taxation of Caris. The reason I felt led to speak is I just want to say, call up my husband and say that I am the proud wife of a Divide volunteer firefighter. Okay? My husband just spent last Saturday eight hours on the mountain rescuing somebody who was there hurt for free. He just did it because he cares, because he cares about this community. When the wildfires were here, he was out all night, no cellphone signal. So I didn't know if he was dead on the mountain. And he did it because that's what we do. We care about this community. He spends hours training, responding to calls in the middle of the night. I know he's not a Woodland Park fireman, which is where Caris is, but those are paid folks. And Divide would come and provide mutual support if there was a fire in this community. I just want you guys to see that we are people who care about this community. We come here. We serve. We love this community. We love Caris. We love what Caris brings. We changed our whole life to come here, but we didn't just come here to take. We came here to give. We're here to give. And I am thankful and I'm so proud of that man who gets up in the middle of the night after working a full eight-hour day to go help people in this community, just out of the goodness of his heart. And so I just wanted you guys to see that we are those people. We care. We serve. We love with the fire department. Thank you.
Am we, you looking to speak? And the other gentleman you're looking to speak to, is that going to be it?
No.
Yeah, he wants to speak to you. All right, now, all right.
Thank you for this meeting. And I was not, my name is Tanya Frye. I am a resident of Woodland Park. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I think we need to focus on the main thing. And it has been presented very well done. You do not have the power to make that decision to try to make that there would be tax. It's clearly understood by law. It's tax exempt. That shouldn't even be up for discussion anymore. That's why we have rule of law. That's why we make laws. Because people tend to think when something comes up and they're not happy about it, we'll just make the change. So I think it's good if we just focus on, number one, that's understood. And I hope that you all would think about that and appreciate law and government. It's here for a reason. Anyone that's been on Caris campus and seen how beautiful it is with the additional student housing? And obviously you can tell I support the housing. If you're on campus, if it hadn't come up or was made public about extending from 35 to 45, when you're driving, you wouldn't even notice it because from the front, you wouldn't see like the back sticking up 10 feet or something. No one's going to see that as Lenea stated. There's woods back there on that, so no one's going to see it. So with that being said, we would really appreciate if you all, okay, that was an issue and your recommendation would be that that's not a problem. Because it's not, it's going to be beautiful. You won't even see it. And secondly, it's already been established. It's tax exempt. And that may sound harsh if we're saying, well, we're not going to pay for additional fire stuff. Even the Marine, when he brought up Trail Ridge, no one said anything about that. And that's, that we've got heights. So what do they do if they need to access? So they must have something, you know, if they needed to access. But it was not, we didn't want to create tension or anything. We just want to fight by our right in the law. So it would be great if you all made your recommendation and stood by law, respected the law, stay within your boundaries respecting the law.
My name is Shannon Lillard. I live in 1133 Spring Valley Drive in Divide. And my wife and I moved here a year ago to attend college at Caris Bible College. No need to echo a lot of the comments that are very good made, other than one more comment that I definitely have a support of the 45 feet. I think that's a precedent's been set. And I don't think it's a negative impact on the beauty of the campus or the town or anything like that. In regards to the funding, I think the biggest thing I've heard tonight out of my time here and never been to anything like this is the funding of the fire department. I see that the biggest need, I see it as a need. While the college may have had, may have a negative, an undue negative impact on the infrastructure of the city, it also provides an undue positive impact in revenue, from my point of view, in the taxing dollars that you do receive. And living in Divide, you get all my tax dollars. There's nothing to spend it on in Divide, other than Russ's makes a pretty good effort.
Yeah.
So, but I try to, I've done construction and I try to go get permits to do things. And I have to work within the confines of what I'm given. This is what I need from you. I need this. I need this and I need this. And I have to provide that. I can't just do it how I want to or I pay price. That's how I see the problem with the funding of the fire department. The fire department may need more. There's more people coming. I'm sorry if this is not the town that you grew up in 45 years ago. McKinney, Texas, when I moved there was 24,000. Now it's 200 that I moved from last year. So change, I don't get to change. I don't get to choose that. But how you fund a fire department, it's the same as the gentleman spoke. You're not charging the campers. You're not charging everyone else. You can't make up law, I mean, you can't make up rules individually to change what you want to change to fix a specific problem. That's why you change the laws. If you need to change how you're funding the fire department, then change how you're funding the fire department. Don't try to impose that on one specific individual. And that's my comment tonight. Thank you.
Sir, can we get you to sign in, please?
And by waiting so patient, you get to be the last one here in the room.
Hello, my name is Elias Stabino. I am resident in 175 Piney Point Lane. It's within walking distance of the Bible College, which I do use to walk to the campus many times. Did hear recently from our neighbor that there was a pair, so try to be a bit more careful. But I would say that I am 100% in favor of the height increase. Not to repeat what's already been said, but based on the construction plans and how things look, you wouldn't be able to see that difference. And I think that's been made abundantly clear by what the public has already said. The main issue that I wanted to bring up and also propose a question as well is that it definitely is unconstitutional as someone who is a student of history and also does attend a Grand Canyon University online as a history student to violate the First Amendment and to charge the Bible College taxes based on this property. As brought up by the attorney, there's so much precedence that this would be unconstitutional. And I would recommend that you guys would do that and present that recommendation. Not because that there wouldn't be a problem, like what Shannon said, that maybe there needs to be more funding for the fire department. But it can't be done through that means because that's unconstitutional. So my question that I would like to propose to the, to all the chairmen and women is, is there different ways that we can alter the tax system instead of 98% of the fire department's revenue coming from property taxes? Can there be changes made and increased changes? Because as also brought up by the attorney, sales tax, income tax are all things that are boosted from Caris. So I would present this question just as an alternative to pinning all the blame on Andrew. And, you know, fire risk is important and it's something that we deal with. And when the lieutenant brought up that statistic, that 98% comes from property taxes, that was kind of shocking. I don't understand why it's set up that way. And I could be totally wrong in mentioning this. I'm only 19. I don't know everything. But I do think it would make more sense if things were drawn on because students, and some people have brought that up, that questions about the real benefit of Caris. But it is clear from, you know, however many students are attending the campus that there is financial benefit to all of those stores and income tax and sales tax. And so many people talk about fire risk. So I think considering changes there would definitely be a recommendation that could also be presented to the council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for commenting. Dave, are there people that are online who've raised their hands and wish to speak? Yeah, we can see it. That will take a moment. Can we read it out loud?
I am Chris Amos. I have lived in Woodland Park since 1999. And I am a property owner and licensed appraiser in the state of Colorado. So I have a pretty good grasp of the Woodland Park and Teller County area. And GE Caris spoke, somebody spoke regarding the overall height of the student housing buildings revision request number one. Stated that 45-foot requested revised height, if approved, raised from 35 to 45 would not only apply to the dorms on the north side of property, but it will be built first, but also apply to the second future student housing. Buildings located in the southwest corner of the property near Highway 24. Quick look at the USGS topographic map shows generally that the first group of dorms are at an approximate elevation of 8,500 whereas the location adjacent to Highway 24 is approximately 8,800. The second group of dorms will be 300 feet higher in elevation from the lower located group and very visible from the highway. I hope that the board considers this difference very closely.
David, with hands up wishing to speak online? I don't wish to detract this one by one. If there's one, two, or three names of people, do we identify those? Put them in order and then give them an opportunity to speak.
Can I speak?
Okay, before we go ahead, Joe, are there other people on the line seeking to speak? Okay, we'll have Joe speak and then we'll close the online comments. Joe, go ahead, please. Your name and address.
Yeah, thank you. Joe Fury, 565 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park. I've been a resident of Woodland Park since 1991, with the exception of four years. And I am not a student or affiliated in any way with Caris College. What I see the situation is, is bait and switch. Caris College signed an agreement to uh, pay taxes on their dorms. And they are now trying to back out of that. I resent being forced to subsidize a national and internationally. Large university. I I don't understand why a Christian college uh, does not want to support. And and pay their fair share for police protection and fire protection. Instead, they want me to pay for it. I'm sorry, I. I urge the planning commission to recommend. That Caris College pay their fair share. Now, if they don't want to pay taxes, but rather make direct payments, I'm fine with that. Um, if they want to not pay taxes and provide their own fire and police, I'm okay with that. Thank you very much.
I will, thank you, Joe. With that, I'm going to close the. Close the public comment. I guess ask representative from the applicant wishes to make a rebuttal.
John, yes. First, I want to thank everybody for the comments. I think having perspective from both sides is very important, and we appreciate it. The one thing that I do want to address um, and solely is just the building height. There was that last comment online where they spoke about the forty-five foot height. And specifically referencing the the USGS map. That's actually a little bit inaccurate. The South Campus site that they're showing is actually a bit lower than Highway twenty-four. The other part to kind of consider in that application is Truck Creek Road that comes into the site is going to dictate a lot of that height. And Truck Creek Road at kind of that bend is quite a bit lower than Highway twenty-four. I can't speak to exactly, but I would say it's at least ten to fifteen feet lower. So that forty-five foot height, if if it goes in that scenario, would still have to deal with those grades and likely be buried below um, I twenty-five. And for perspective to just um, the current application is well over three thousand feet away from twenty-four. So quite a bit away, and there's a lot of ground cover there, as mentioned with uh, the landscaping existing and proposed.
I had a a question for John. What what's the total square foot or acreage for the proposed student housing?
Approximately eight acres. Yeah, of the one forty-six.
How do you identify that property you've referred to with the students, the whether it's proposed, the currently proposed and then the future site? What's the name for each of those areas?
The current PUD identifies them as student housing.
Okay, you don't, you don't, was it north, south? Was that's all it's called?
That was a planning staff's distinction was um, the the site that they're looking to develop initially, I've referred to as the North Housing Site.
And it should be noted it's phased. So there was some past proposed phasing that was tied to that. So which that will need to be modified to kind of match that, but that's not a part of this current phase.
Other questions for the applicant? Now, I guess, all right. Um, thank you. Thank you for rebuttal.
Thank you.
An opportunity for the commission to address that. I understand the city attorney. That's still the case, or that.
Hi, I'm still here. If you guys. How are you doing? Sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm in a dark. I have a slide here. Yeah, I just wanted to make a few statements that hopefully will help as you all deliberate. The first is that, you know, the city is unwilling to concede at this point that there's still a legal issue under a loop and the First Amendment, because any such argument has. Statute of limitations problems. Um, any attorney would know that not thinking through all these issues for ten years unfortunately doesn't invalidate uh, statute of limitation concerns. And the most important thing I just want to reiterate is it was in a sta- staff report is that app, the applicant is the one who has asserted these claims that. Regarding Ralupa that are outside of the normal parameters of the planning commission control and the authority of Title eighteen. And that's why we recommend that the city council is the proper body to weigh in on this particular modification. Including a potential consideration of the Ralupa concerns. Even the Ministry's own attorney himself conceded that this topic is not part of land use approval and regulations. Or planning commission's jurisdiction and that there's no authority, quote unquote, to decide the tax exemption issue. So that's why we just recommend uh, that course of action. And if anyone has any questions, I will. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here now or during the rest of the um, this hearing.
Leah, do you have a question? Nina, Carol Harvey, I I didn't understand what you were talking about in terms of uh, limitations. Uh, are you saying that statute of limitations has expired or has not?
It has for Ralupa and First Amendment um, claims.
Uh, you're you're gonna have to speak up. I did not understand what you just said.
Yes, it has, or yes, it has. And yes, it's been ten years.
Okay, thank you.
I guess part of the thought is whether it has expired or not, it's not really a matter for planning commission to opine upon it.
Well, Nina, then my question is, what, if anything, can the planning condition commission do? Can we? We can uh, make a decision or deliberation on the first request in the um. Application and not the second, we can, or can we make a recommendation to city council on the second? Request.
You can do anything you want, um, but we staff and attorney recommend.
Can I make a suggestion as how we proceed? And we first address request number one, see if we can reach a view, a consensus, I approve it as is, approve it with conditions or or recommend deny. Second, then then let's turn to the next topic. We'll decide if there's anything we can opine about with regard to it or not. Maybe, maybe one can parse it such that portion is suitable relates to land use, and a portion doesn't relate to land use. The portion which doesn't relate to land use, I would discourage us from trying to take, take a substitute. So. If that's acceptable, and the people, comments from commissioners regarding. Regarding request number one, thirty-five foot to forty, forty-five foot for student house.
Asking for comment?
Yeah.
No comment from me.
Well, my question then, but goes back to what our authority as a commission is. It, if it's simply a change to the PUD. Isn't that normally? Heard by the commission only? Do we not have the authority to make that change without the city council's approval?
Not a dimensional standard.
Okay, okay.
Other uses, yes, but dimensional standards definitely go to city council.
Okay, thank you.
And again, had it not been a PUD, this would have been a building variance submitted, not even to the planning commission, it had been in as other zone area.
I had, I had two questions regarding the forty. I don't necessarily find, I don't find particularly unesthetic or particularly bothersome, but I do worry about uniformity within, within the, uh, within the city. Couple, couple of thoughts. First off, it appears from their drawings, they don't need forty-five feet, they need thirty-nine and a half feet, and the extra is just in, and that's not generally the way we do things.
I I would argue that you saw one drawing with one grading. Dimension shown, which may or may not apply to all the topography on the property. So in order to avoid. Needing thirty-nine and a half or forty-one and a half on the next one, they went with forty-five because it will not exceed forty-five according to the drawing. So I think it was a smart suggestion to do forty-five.
Two areas, at least I wanted to bring up for people. The second one, uh, I had alluded to earlier and actually were comments addressed as well, but. Well, I don't have any particular objection forty-five feet, this location, this proposal, I'm not so sure that in every other case, in any other possible student housing, do it. Does it make sense to grant forty-five for this particular application? This way, in this, in this location, it's set way back from the highway, no one seems to have a problem with it. But not necessarily that any student housing anywhere in the property, anywhere within the PUD poses questions, right?
Well, mine would be that the site plan shows the locations for the student housing that they're proposing. Correct. And if they propose new ones, it wouldn't it have to come back to the.
No, no. Proposed, it would be any, with any student housing within, I believe.
As shown on the plan, right?
Any, any student housing within the P sanctuary PUD.
Sure.
Would go from thirty-five to forty-five, the currently proposed and anything.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And I'm going to put that within the restriction of um, the currently shown um, secondary housing site. There's the one that we're talking about. Tonight that's on on deck for development. And then there's the the second site.
But the amendments for all student housing?
That I referred to as um, that that future phase. If they want to change the location of that future phase, uh, that is part of what potentially comes back to planning commission for review. So tonight, I would view the forty-five as applying to the student housing use within the PUD. At these two designated locations.
And I don't know if it's a big issue, but those are the two particular thoughts I was concerned about, and see if other ones the commission do or can thoughts on it.
Sure.
I think the thing to consider in this height too, is we talk a lot about the character of Woodland Park. We talk about the character of Andrew Womack Ministries, those buildings. Without those gable roofs, you wouldn't have that character. So that adds height to it that maybe is not usable space, but it creates that architectural guidelines that we want to create. Within the community and within the campus. So I think that's something I'd ask you to consider too, is that carries that those gables, you know. Other than that, if if we had to work within the thirty-five foot height, we could do flat roofs. You know, that might work, but that changes the character of the architectural design that we're trying to promote. So that helps with that too. And it just to clarify, it is for all student housing. Whether this phase or future phases.
Ken had a question. Hartsville.
Yes, thank you. We approved a PUD based on what the applicant applied for with a thirty-five foot height limit. And I'm concerned is that they haven't demonstrated any hardship from what their original design. Asked for. So they're asking for forty-five feet now. So I'm reluctant to move forward based on that. Now, with the consideration of the architectural style they're providing, the gables. Do add character to the building and add appeal. Based on the standard footprint that they provided of eleven foot floor to floor. If you're going to have a walkout situation on the lower level, it's going to be forty feet at most and not the forty-five. They did not present any documentation on the southern lot. It's all based on the northern lot. So at best, I would support a forty-foot change for the northern lot only. To be revisited for the southern lot in the future.
Other comments, sir?
Well, I I would support the forty-five feet, uh, because that seems to be the more appropriate. Size for that building for three stories. And we've got examples of three-story buildings at forty-five already in the city. So I'm just as a comment.
I see some head nodding.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify what uh, Ken had just said. Is he talking about this forty-five foot variance for? The southern project only?
No, I would propose that we don't make a variance for the southern properties, since they have not provided us any argument why we should change it. Specific to that site, there's no. To that site. So. I would propose forty foot for the northern. Properties which they presented. Only.
I'm not sure you're going to get a second on it. Ken, do you want to make a motion? If someone else want, the other Ken?
For for forty-five feet?
Or whatever your motion is. If you'd like to make a motion for forty-five feet, deploying all student housing, we look exactly to the.
I would like to make a motion for uh, approval of. The item one of the expansion from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet.
Is this, this is the city staff's recommendation?
For the, for the city staff's recommendation.
Or should we hold off on a motion to?
Or we can wait.
And we'll do a motion when we got both things done. The city staff recommendation sort of fit with what?
I'm sorry.
I'm saying it's. It's it's sound, it sounds like, it sounds like at least, at least three recommending. Except the city staff recommendation, well, forty-five feet and student housing. Can't suggest an alternative, but.
Right.
If that's the case, I'd like to get one motion. So this.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
But this could be half of the motion right now. It's staff language.
Based on doing separate motions for item one and item two?
Uh, that's what I want to clarify. What, what do you mean, half a motion?
Had a, had a city attorney recommendation, say a single motion, two parts.
For each recommendation.
Okay, and I guess I.
Nina, can I ask this? Is that, if you're still on?
I was gonna. Say, I recognize what she had directed, but I. I'm comfortable if we deal with. Request number one first and then deal with request number two second. Nina, what is your preferred guidance?
The reason I asked, I I had understood, I understood you suggested that make a single motion. That address, address is in two parts, that addresses request one and request two.
Usually what I'm used to is you make a recommendation about what's in front of you. It's one, one request, I, well, one general application. So it could be whether there'd be a motion and an amendment to it, or just for a motion and see how, you know, you can talk about it, but I, I think it's best to be in one motion.
For both recommendations. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds all right.
So, so, so we're, we're being asked to make a recommendation to the city council based on the request of the applicant to revise the PUD. So I'm in favor of going ahead with the forty-five feet. I think that's architecturally not much difference than forty. I think it fits with the profile of the property. There's already high buildings there. It's all contained in one PUD. I think other PUDs would have to be considered separately. I don't think we're setting a precedent. But that's just my opinion. On the second one, I think it's. Clear that the five oh one C three organizations based on state statutes. Title thirty-nine is taxation. Uh, exemptions are applied to religious organizations for property tax, as well as charitable organizations, et cetera. In uh, the state of Colorado, we also have exemptions for property tax, of partial property tax for disabled veterans and for senior citizens. So, you know, and it's not in our purview to argue those points. So for a recommendation, we could recommend to the city council that they drop. The second part of this, the item fourteen as a requirement. And that we could add to it and that they work out with the applicant opportunities for. Compensation of any kind or means that might be appropriate to work out for the fire district's. Burden to take care of properties. That would be our recommendation to the council. And then they could work it out with them as a proposed way to maybe to move forward.
Carol, do you have thoughts on?
Well, I I would second that as a motion, but I just want to make sure that we're clear on the request for the height variance. For which parcel of land that applies to, it's not a blanket. Uh, variance that would apply to a future. Development of housing. Is that?
So right now, there's a table that shows twelve buildings at thirty-five feet. Three story in the table. And we would change that to. Forty-five feet, three-story buildings.
Any student housing.
And it says student housing is the descriptor. So that's what we would be changing it to.
I would suggest we add us another row for north and south. Sections and not approve the increase in the southern portion until we know what they're proposing to build.
So Ken, you would then say the motion would be, would apply to. The northern, northern student housing development only. Or vice versa, whatever it was. Okay. Not. Not proposed housing at another location of student housing.
I'm concerned they presented one, the northern development plans, elevations, nice details. But we don't know anything about the southern. Is it the same buildings? They haven't provided that. Information is all we have. It's all we can approve.
If you wish to address, this is one of the reasons I asked, what do you call each section? So you can refer to it. Want to do is it'd be useful to have a name for what's the currently proposed area.
Can I add something here? I think. I do want to clarify again, forty-five for all.
I do wanna clarify again, forty-five for all student housing. There is a provision in the P U D that allows for three stories that we are not asking to change. So if we limit that to thirty-five feet or forty feet to create that similar kind of architectural aesthetic and Component to that site, that won't be achieved. We would have to look at flat roofs. So we are not asking to change the three stories. We want to maintain the ability to do three stories. I do think that I don't like using the word burden, but there's topography changes, there are site requirements. Um there's grading implications based on the current roadways that are in place That would necess necessitate certain changes in certain areas. So to say That, you know, um forty-five doesn't work for other ones. I think there is a burden based on topography. I think there's a burden based on architectural designs which we are asked to meet as part of the code requirement. And so those are the things that we would like to kind of continue forward. We would like that to go forward with the fourth. We understand you have that, you know, the uh the Ability to ask for those recommendations, but I think that would create undue burden if we did limit that height.
I I guess in particular, just what I was just trying to We have a single motion. So I
That's fine.
If we could come to a consensus on what part request is, just about one, we could build it in, we'll add that. Then we'll then we'll figure out the consensus in the second part, then we can just have a motion. It sounds like there is not, there is not a
Thinking that the student housing is uh Same on the opposite side of the Gospel Truth Way Road, I guess, from twenty-four. Or is it on both sides of that? I I was looking at the plan. Maybe I can talk to Ken about this, but.
Well, uh Comments there, the massing uh Can change quite a bit. As Carol mentioned earlier, the discussion of how smaller uh Single-family type or even multiple family of smaller scale, the forty-five foot's not necessary. At the large mass that they're proposing, um maybe it does need to be as tall as they're proposing, but there are options. Also, they've got a full walkout basement. A lot of uh developments have garden levels or even basement agree uh arrangements. So the height is not Necessarily consistent or required to be forty-five, just required to be forty-five based on their Speculation of what might be built on the future southern properties. Their proposal is only for the northern properties, so I'm reluctant to uh Especially grant the impact that may have on Highway twenty-four.
Okay, for purpose of building a motion, can we have a tentative, not a final motion?
I would ask Ken to make the motion. He's the, he's the architect. Let Ken make the motion because he has a better understanding if we're talking about.
Ma'am, we've already asked comments from everyone. Please allow us to finish.
The form of, the basic form of a resolution proposed by the staff.
Well, well, Ken is making a comment that that's puzzling me a little bit in that um What they're showing is an architectural drawing that shows forty-five feet for a building That has a gable roof, three stories, which is not atypical for that type of building. Three stories and that type of roof. Um so to get that height, uh that that's the limit of what they're showing for the building. So if we limit the height of the Building on the drawing on the P U D to forty-five feet, it meets what they're requesting in every circumstance. Uh setting it to forty means they can only build certain buildings or have to re-engineer the grades or whatever. Um I don't again know what the grade would be on the other south side. Uh but it is on the opposite side of the their internal road from Highway twenty-four. Um there is some topography there that is somewhat of a hill, but um My, my question would be What would be the purpose of trying to force the design of a second building style and height? When we need this housing to help with some of the housing issues that we have in Woodland Park?
Well, the
What's the concern? Is it's line of sight view?
Sight and also failure in the applicant's part to demonstrate a necessity to change the original proposal to what they're proposing now. I don't know what was originally proposed. It's a reasonable building now, but uh There's no hardship that they've demonstrated. Uh they had the opportunity, the original P U D to survey the property, to know what the trains were gonna be, to know what the heights of their Proposed housing stock was gonna be. So this just seems to be a a change for no apparent reason and no uh supporting arguments. And so
Applicant have a rebuttal?
Uh it's not a pro, let me finish. Giving the concession of an additional five feet to accommodate the architecture. Since that meets what they've proposed, it's consistent with what they're asking for. So the forty-five Or maybe it's a nominal five feet does not uh Has not been demonstrated of their need.
I would again just reiterate what I had stated earlier is there's a three-story component to this P U D. That is where there is a challenge in creating a three-story building. These type of architectural elements and consistency in the design standards that are being asked to meet the current code. So that is what I'd like to kind of just remind Ken, I think, and I I agree, I think there is Some kind of confusion there, but there is a three-story component to this that has always been approved with the original P U D. To limit this current application to or to change it based on kind of the current approvals. I think creates some challenges because we already have an approved P U D for th- three stories, thirty-five feet. We're only asking to change the height to support that three stories in any scenario. The current building that you're seeing now doesn't hit forty-five feet. The average mean height of that is forty feet. But future applications, understanding grading, understanding that architectural style to achieve three stories Would create challenges under that current restriction of thirty-five feet.
I don't, if we don't have, if we're not having consensus here, I almost sort of have to do this. We can't do two separate parts and people are voting on one because
Right, we have to
I think we have to break it.
Well, I'll make a motion. Alright, I would like to make a motion uh that the planning commission approve as requested the item one. Changing the height of the student housing on the P U D from a maximum of thirty-five feet Three-story to a maximum of forty-five feet, three-story, based on the staff's recommendation. And comments we heard here tonight. Uh I'd also like to move that the item two related to conditional approval that we recommend to the city council That um we approve the removal of that and that the city council will take under advisement to consider Alternate means to offset issues with the funding of the fire department. That's our recommendation.
Discuss it. I think that, I think that's 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 way too much. We haven't talked about.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. We need further discussion on part two.
We can revise it.
Then I will second your first motion.
The first one.
Is that, would you like to?
We can just do
That to be exactly the staff report. You got the language for the staff.
Alright, I would make a motion to, as the applicant's request number one, that the planning Plan Commission recommend approval of the amendment to the sanctuaries P U D, P A P D, final development plan to change its dimensional standard For the student housing building height from a maximum of thirty-five feet, three-story to a maximum of forty-five feet, three-story. Based on the findings contained in the staff report and is presented at public hearing.
Subject to
Subject to the conditions. Uh the tables on the cover sheet are revised so the information presented in any format that's consistent with past approvals. Temporary student housing is listed in two parts to clarify the number of units and bedrooms being constructed in this phase and the number of units, bedrooms for a future phase.
Second for that?
And I will second that.
Any, any further discussion?
Uh Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Um and Commissioner Hartsfield?
No.
Passes score one.
The other request, the request number two, one which hasn't been discussed much, I like Attention to is a guard, two separate parts. Question I addressed to applicant's attorney or try to try to make the distinction here. Most of his discussion went to the language that the student housing will be privatized, the lease agreement, some other arrangements, so it can be separate from tax. I think that's specific, if my understanding from city attorney, that's specifically like She recommended against our making recommendation on, largely because it's outside of our purview, expertise and authority Being a matter of
In a planning commission document. That was, yes, you well said, outside of our purview and expertise.
The the first part of it though is 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 interesting because it 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 reads, the applicant agrees that the housing on the development will be temporary student housing, not permanent house. So that wouldn't seem to be, it would not seem to be addressed in the same way by the applicant's arguments about Other applicable law. And it would seem to be a limitation that was Adopted by the city council and accepted by college When the P U D was established, that housing that was built in this would be Temporary student housing. Absent, absent that, by taking that out, that would be sending to suggest some expand, at least in my mind, it seemed to suggest some expansion Of use, other kind of apartment buildings for other uses related to the college use or not. I mean, it's unclear. But it 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 seems to me that It's any, that is, that's something that is within the purview of planning commission, it's a zoning matter. And I haven't heard any arguments that would suggest one should take that out. So my recommendation would be that the city council preserve that language. But we make no recommendation, leave it to the city council as to uh the efficacy of the Meaning portion, the student housing will be privatized.
Well, I think we're not making a decision, we're making a recommendation. And I think we made the recommendation as a planning commission ten years ago Based on conversations that I think were made in good faith on both parties. I I don't think your aggressive approach to the planning commission was trying to force something. I think it was offered. And I think they tried to agree and get commitment. And then there was a Pressure point put into that language and said it will become a requirement, which is Not the purview of a planning commission from what I read. Uh Division of Property Taxation, the state of Colorado has the title, and they clearly say who's exempt from taxes for property tax. Uh it's unfortunate that the fire department's only revenue source is property taxes, and they are carrying the burden of fire protection for The nonprofit, which is a big group in this community. Uh but there should be a way to figure that out, but it's not through the planning commission trying to enforce that because that's not our purview to try and Do taxation. Now, that's my Opinion, but on what I've heard, what I've read and what I've heard tonight. So In recommending, not saying we're deciding, because this has to go to the city council. We recommend that that language, I would propose to make a motion to recommend that we just Agree to remove that language and let them decide.
Which which language?
Condition fourteen, the condition of approval uh for the P U D. That it be privatized.
I I would recommend that we keep out of areas which we just agreed a moment ago, which I think you
And I agree that we shouldn't have been in there in the first place. And if we don't take it out, that's fine too. The city council will have to deal with it. But because we're supposed to recommend things to the city council, We can make a motion to to recommend it, and if it doesn't pass, then you can make a motion to Not approve it.
You can make it like I said. My view is that the first, the first portion of condition fourteen, we should recommend be retained. Second portion, we should recommend city council. City council, I think is the appropriate body to assess this, assess this efficacy or any action.
I would support your suggestions, Lee.
I'm sorry, Ken, could you repeat that?
Uh in response to Lee's comments, I would support that we retain the first clause of that statement. Uh to be temporary housing and not get into full-time apartments.
Temporary student housing would probably be more descriptive. Is that fair?
It will retain the language as it is. We don't have to guess. It would be Applicant agrees that the housing development will be temporary student housing, not permanent house. That's the kind of, that's the kind of residential use.
True, but is there a specific definition of temporary? And I think that comes full circle to what we had the discussion before is Is that a hundred and twenty days or five hundred and twenty days?
I I, I'm not trying to fix the world. I'm trying.
May I offer, uh temporary shows up in condition fourteen, but on the cover pages for the P U D approvals, It's listed as just student housing.
And I think that's appropriate. I don't know where that temporary phraseology came in ever. It's just student housing.
And I don't disagree with you. If if I were going to write myself today, starting at, say, the applicant agrees that Housing or the development will be student housing. Should I try and fix it or just, that's already there and they've agreed to that language? That was agreeable at the time. The arguments say I have to change it, so I was only Only trying to Deal with the part that is that issue that's sent into the city council.
Well, I may be wrong. I don't think the applicant had any issue with temporary versus permanent. It it was just a matter of student housing being privatized, not, I I don't know.
I think so. That's why it's important for us to distinguish because the first part is development, planning, zoning, no issue. The second part is taxation question.
I guess I'm
Our attorneys ready to?
The the request is to remove condition fourteen in its entirety, but however, Um I don't think there's any issue with making it student housing. I mean, that's obviously the intention here. Um so uh but to be clear, our request is to remove it in its entirety.
I think it's clear it's student housing from all the plans that we've approved. Now, I don't know if you
That's and that's why, let's leave the language in that says student house.
Well, I'm I'm just wondering if you go look at the rest of the P U D, if it's already in there, student housing. Why, why leave fourteen, which is talking about privatizing?
Actually refer, the general usage of the sanctuary is private lodging, including student housing.
Private lodging?
Science, you'll find it in the staff.
Okay.
As it appears on the cover sheets for the P U Ds, it's in that use table, it's listed as just student housing. So the question in front of you is really that condition fourteen as a whole. And what to do with that condition fourteen?
I don't think we lose anything by dropping the first part about the housing will be temporary student housing, not permanent house. But if you feel that that's something needs to be in there, it should be in as a different condition potentially. Not, I mean, we could strike this and just put another condition in that be student housing. And not
I I agree.
Apartments for residential.
Yeah, I agree. Ken, the the whole question is on student housing. I know that in original discussions, there was talk about having faculty housing. But this is specifically in the applications, I think, intended to address student housing.
It it seems like there's two purposes there, right? Wanted to make sure it's student housing, not permanent, very clear, says that right there. The other one is that it be privatized uh through lease or other means possible.
Applicant's attorney just told.
He's okay. He's okay.
The request is remove everything, but he doesn't, he's not indicating any particular objection.
And I don't have any rejection either for it to say the housing will be student housing, not permanent house.
So if the motion started with our recommendation to city council, oh, get you.
Now, how come you didn't get along with both?
It's already the one at the time.
All right. So the, let me, I'll read this out loud. I may not agree to it, but I'll read it out loud. As to the applicant's request number two relating to the condition of approval, number fourteen, the planning commission recommends to city council that housing on the development should remain temporary student housing, not permanent housing. But that as it relates to the student housing being privatized, either through a lease arrangement or some other arrangement, so that can be separately taxed. I'll say it. So, so you're saying.
So this was a recommendation to the, the.
From our attorney.
City attorney without a recommendation on that part, but that they consider it with regards to that.
So just eliminate that last part of.
Well, I would recommend we eliminate that as our recommendation, but because it's clearly an issue, but.
I don't think we can recommend elimination of it.
But.
I didn't go to law school. There's a lot of quotes from, uh.
Yep.
Applicant's attorney, a lot of case history in that, but that's presented his argument. And I'm sure there's plenty of other case history or items which may sway the other way. So I don't think we can recommend removal of that until we get council to give a full discussion of what's applicable. We're going to city council to make those recommendations.
Ken, let me, I, I will reread for the record, our city attorney's recommendation for a draft or for a resolution, I'll, I'll try not to editorialize. As to the applicant's request number two relating to the condition of approval number fourteen, the planning commission recommends to city council that the housing on the development should remain temporary student housing, not permanent housing. But that as it relates to the student housing being privatized through either lease arrangement or some other arrangements, so that it can be separately taxed. The planning commission recommends, acting in part on the advice of the city attorney, that the city council is the proper body to assess this part of the requested modification, including consideration of the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act claims alleged by the applicant. So Nina, I assume you're saying that would be the motion?
I, I didn't draft that. I think it was the vice chair Phillips, but the second clause is what, what, what I recommend. I have no opinion whether temporary housing, student housing, but I did make a recommendation that the relupa claims alleged by the applicant be considered by the city council. I strongly advise that.
Glad I'm not on city council anymore.
That does clarify the point, Ms. Harvey. Thank you. So I would be in agreement to that motion.
All right, that is my motion then.
So then Ken is seconding it.
For second to that.
I will second that.
Do you have any, any further discussion of it? Are we clear on what that says, what it means?
So we, we will, what it says to me is that we will retain the language in condition number fourteen that talks about temporary student housing, not permanent housing. As for the original condition, we will push that to the city council to decide if, in fact, the applicant has met the consideration of the federal religious land use and institutionalized persons act.
That's, I would like to make it a little more clear. I would like to have it say we would retain the language up to the point of permanent housing, you know, where it says student housing, not permanent housing. And that our recommendation is that the city council consider what to do as, from the point of privatization on, with relationship to the applicant's claim that they should not be unduly taxed by us for land use.
I think that's what it's.
I know.
I just, that was my intent.
Yeah, okay. I know. I, I just want to make sure it's clear that we're recommending to the city council that they consider what to do with that portion of this condition fourteen that, and then maybe we stay, and that we recognize that's not within the planning commission's purview to.
I think we've got enough, I think, what I was saying.
Okay.
It's a procedural, like you have a motion on the table, a second. So if someone wants amended, either make an amendment or vote on it. You could talk about it, but.
Okay, well, I would like to amend it to add that we're recommending to the city council that they consider the point from privatization, those words.
Yeah, the planning commission recommends, acting in part on the advice of the city attorney, that the city council is the proper body to assess this part of the requested modification, including consideration of relupia, whatever the heck that is, claims as alleged by the applicant.
Can I read it?
Yeah.
Including consideration of, okay, so I want them to consider it and based on the applicant's claim as a, an alternate, for an additional consideration. So I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So the original motion is seconded?
Yes, for discussion. Do we have, we have a vote?
Do we want to discuss it? Do we have any further discussion? I, I do. And, and I only say this, I know how I'm going to devote, but, um, I, I will go back to the allegation that the planning commission in two thousand and twelve and the city council in two thousand and twelve made this an onerous condition for the applicant at that time. It was actually a decision that was, that we came to through discussion with an authorized representative of, of the university. And it was to offset the cost of loss of property tax, which is how our fire district is funded. It had nothing to do with any other issue except for that service. All of the other first responder services in the city are, well, it's not true. The police department is funded through sales tax revenue in the city's general fund. There is another district for ambulance service. There's another district for, or taxing district for the library. But fire service is funded through property tax. And the loss of that property tax was a concern at the time. It wasn't that anyone said, no, we don't want this particular property to be used in this particular way. I think there was a very welcoming attitude in the community at the time that this was a great idea. But what we did recognize, as did Mr. Bozeman, is that there would be a drain on resources of our fire district. One of the things that we suggested on the planning commission and in city council was payment in lieu of taxes. And I would certainly want that discussion to occur again, but that is not an action we can take here as the planning commission tonight.
I think a motion's on floor procedurally. If we, you guys could either talk about the motion, amend the motion or vote on the motion.
The city, well, the city attorney is calling the question.
No, I'm just, I'm just giving advice. There's a motion on the table. I want to make sure. Clear hearing, the options and emotions on the table, it was seconded. We either vote on the motion, you either amend the motion or you discuss the motion itself.
But ma'am, but ma'am, we can't have a discussion. Are you calling the question?
Yes.
Okay.
We will.
Certainly. Commissioner Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Come back to me. Please.
Procedurally?
This is the motion to retain the language and send it that way. I'll, I'll say yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartsfield?
Yes.
Commissioner or Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank, thank you all for your patience this evening. We finished before the ten fifty-five potential purview, which is merciful for all of us. Thanks very much. Do we have anything else on the agenda? Anything else we need to cover folks?
Staff reports, probably not, especially.
I don't think we do staff report. Oh, there's, it's, there's a provision for reports, but I hope we have none.
I don't have anything additional to add this evening.
Is there a scheduled meeting on Thursday?
No, there is no planning commission meeting this Thursday, July twenty, or June twenty-third. This is your obligation for the week.
I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All, all in favor?
See you, everyone.